Good morning. I am President Nick J. Mosby, President of Baltimore City Council, and we're here on Tuesday, September 12, 2023, in this committee as a whole meeting on LO 23-0042, the operations of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. Joining us this morning, to my left, we have Chairman Bullock,
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chairman Stokes, Councilwoman Porter, and Chairman Conway. We also have with us, from the council services, Mr. Director Larry Green. From my office, we have Tiffany Macklin. And I believe we have all that are up here. From the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themelis. As well as, from Finance, we have our amazing Budget Director. And then the Person of the Hour, that we're going to be talking to a lot today, Director Augustine, thank you for joining us, as well as your team. So with that, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion and some major concerns that community residents have reached out to the council and that we've also seen on the news regarding the operations of MOHS and the payment. This council has done a lot as it relates to housing security. You know, the administration has done a lot related to housing insecurity. And this just kind of has risen up to a major concern at this point. So the purpose of today's hearing is just to provide legislative oversight, understanding all the operations, some of the concerns that have been communicated to us, any new concerns that we should know about, and more importantly, how do we move forward from here? You know, access to housing is a human right, and the threat of eviction, or even eviction, is a really traumatic experience for anyone. If you have been through it, you understand that wholeheartedly. It has lifelong implications at times. So obviously, when the city's part of that, part of that equation, it's important for us to ensure that we're doing all that we can do to better protect the citizens of the city of Baltimore. We know coming out of COVID, housing insecurity has been a major issue, a major concern. Again, legislatively, this council has taken a lot of action on that through COVID, first in the state to pass Just Cause, and we've done a lot of other work around security deposits and of like, and we'll continue to push this to ensure that we provide the best potential outcomes for the citizens of Baltimore. So with that, we're going to just jump right into you, Director Augustine. I'm pretty sure there's going to be a lot of questions for members of the council. We have a limited amount of folks that have signed up from the public. If there's anyone here, whether you're a landlord, or resident, or just a concerned community member, you know, please don't hesitate to sign up because you will be afforded the opportunity to speak. At this time, I'll turn it over to you, Director.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you, Council President Mosby, and to the honorable members of the City Council. I do have, actually, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We created a PowerPoint. We want to first give you an overview kind of of MOHS and the COC, and then we went in directly into what the challenges are and the corrective actions that we've been taking in terms of that. And so I will be sharing the microphone with my new Chief of Staff, Roland Selby. He's been in the position for...
Seven weeks.
Seven weeks. And so he will be sharing information from the PowerPoint as well. And so... Or is it this one?
We're going to enlarge it real quick. Let me see. You gotta, you gotta hold it now. Let me hold it. When you get on it, you gotta hold it down, hold the left one down. There we go. Now, let me see. There we go.
Okay.
Yes, Director, please.
Thank you. So just to go over the agenda and what we will quickly present before we head into questions is just a quick overview of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, an overview of our continuum of care funding, our reimbursement process, and then which will go into some of the challenges and the corrective actions that we've taken, and then last are questions. And so at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Roland Selby, our Chief of Staff.
Good morning, everyone. So we wanted to provide a brief overview of what our mission is with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and it is to make homeless rare, brief, and nonrecurring in both Baltimore City. We work together with our providers, with the community, with other agencies, to ensure that we are responsive to the needs and that we're taking care of the good stewardship that has been entrusted to us as an agency. Next slide, please. The services that we provide, we're responsible for administering approximately $72 million annually for programs that support Baltimore City's homeless response system. We're the designated lead agency for the continuum of care. We're a grantee, we're the collaborative applicant, the coordinated access lead, and we do the homeless management information systems lead. We provide direct services offered, which include outreach, housing navigation, housing identification, Code Blue winter shelter, Code Red outreach, and Cool Center support, rental assistance, emergency interim housing, and case management for HAPWA. Next slide, please. In this slide, we illustrate the chunks and tranches of the funds that we have for the total of $72 million. So in general fund, we have $14.2 million that we manage, federal funds, which include the continuum of care, the emergency solutions grant, and the housing opportunities for people with AIDS, or we call it HAPWA. That's $51.5 million. From state, we're responsible for $5.6 million, and we have a special fund that's about $639,000. Next slide, please.
So I'm going to go over the continuum of care funding, which a majority of our housing funds is through the continuum of care, and our allocation for FY '22 was a little over $26 million. But we also make sure that through those funds, that people, it supports housing, and so of those funds, 2,300 households remain housed. However, we do have distinct roles within the continuum of care, and this was established through the Homeless Emergency Assistance and Rapid Transition to Housing Act, the HURTH Act, which President Obama signed into law in 2009, and then HUD created the interim rule in 2012, which created the COC program. Within the program, and this is a bit different from other federal funding streams, it requires that communities that receive continuum of care funding have a continuum of care. And the continuum of care is a broad base of stakeholders representing different parts of our community, including people with lived experiences, all towards reducing and ending homelessness within our community. It requires also that the COC create a board of directors and designate a collaborative applicant, an HMIS lead, and a coordinated entry lead, which MOHS, those are the responsibilities that have been given to us and bestowed to us by the COC. The COC also must establish work groups or subcommittees, and have, and they're responsible for carrying out the responsibilities of the continuum of care, which are also outlined in the governance charter. And so bottom line here is that while we have roles within our COC, the direction that we take largely come from the continuum of care. They're the ones responsible for establishing the coordinated entry system. They're responsible, and right now we're in the program competition, for the allocation of the continuum of care funds, which is very, a very, I would say, formulated process, and we're going through that right now. The COC funding supports a broad array of interventions. Like I said, a majority of our funds go towards housing, and so there are five categories that continuum of care funding supports. It's permanent housing, both permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing, transitional housing, homelessness management information system, support services only projects, and then homeless prevention. But homeless prevention are only designated to those communities that are high-performing communities, which I don't believe, there might be one or two in the U.S., but a lot of communities aren't in that high-performing status. And like I said, COC funds support 2,300 households and keeps them permanently housed within our community. Here is just a, really a timeline of our COC projects. We have about 40 COC projects that are administered through the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. The reason why I wanted to present this timeline is I also wanted you to see the timeline in terms of when grant agreements are issued by HUD and how this potentially could impact our COC projects. So we have COC projects that start as early as February 1st, and they go up until December 1st. And the COC projects, and many of these projects were set up before myself and my staff started at MOHS. And so in terms of determining the dates of these projects, these predated a lot of my current staff. The reason why that's so important is because HUD typically doesn't announce their awards till March, and the end of March. This year, it happened on March 28th. So if we have projects that start in February, we don't hear that we get the funding announced until March, that already creates a delay in terms of contracts. And then in terms of the grant agreements by HUD, they don't actually issue grant agreements for these awarded projects until the summer. So this year, we didn't get our first set of grant agreements until August 3rd. And so if we waited for HUD to issue the grant agreements, we would still be waiting today to get contracts executed. And so to make up for that gap between when we, you know, because these projects are renewed annually. However, to be able to start the contracting process for this year, we had to get that notice from HUD saying that we were awarded funding, and we didn't technically get that funding award letter until March 28th. And so from there, the city, knowing that the grant agreements will come later, just not knowing how much later we started the contracting process, because we know that if we don't have executed contracts, we would not be able to pay our providers to be able to reimburse them for the services they were providing at that time. And so the timeline here shows basically where a lot of our projects hit. Where it's a concern for us is really 10 projects that start before July 1st, because we know not only that the announcement comes in the spring, but how long it takes to also get contracts going, and we know that it's impacted really those projects that started in February, February 1st until July. And so those are, I think, the projects that you're hearing the most about as well, because they also have been the ones that have, that deal with the contract delays the most. The other thing that I want to state in terms of the timeline, while we worked very closely with the projects acknowledging the delays, we also worked to send out communication as well in terms of those delays and to keep not only our providers updated, but also their landlords updated as well. Some of our COC providers have really good relationships with their landlords and, you know, are able to work with them on this. Some of our providers have struggled this year with that. But in terms of these contract delays, this is not a, you know, this year phenomenon. This has historically happened, unfortunately, with these particular projects and with these delays with HUD. And so... And so the next few slides, we are going over really, we've outlined challenges, and then on the other side, worked on the corrective actions or solutions that we have been working on or working to develop. I do want you to be aware that in developing these, you know, we are working with other departments within the city, specifically Department of Finance. We've been working closely with HUD and utilizing our HUD TA to make the necessary improvements that we need to make, and that we also have talked about this with our continuum of care, especially with the COC projects and the changes that happen, that have to be made there in the future. So the first challenge that I want to outline is that the providers continue to deliver services and cannot be paid unless there's an executed contract. In the timeline that I showed, I explained some of the challenges to that in terms of the start date of the COC projects, and then when the grant agreement is issued by HUD. And so in terms of a solution, we have worked with, and are working with the Department of Finance to figure out how to streamline the BOE approval of the continuum of care grant. We know that we get the grant every year. In terms of the renewals, we know that that comes every year, and we're exploring different ways with the Department of Finance in terms of how do we make sure that process is a bit more streamlined so that there isn't a gap in terms of reimbursement to our providers because of the contracts. We're also exploring the idea of a multi-year approval for a recurring grant, and we've also have talked to our, the COC leadership of potentially moving the start date of the COC projects. And the only way we can make substantial changes to that is looking at it during the program competition. The thing about moving the start dates, it will require that if we move it, we have to cover the months that it's not covered by the contract because of the move. And so we would have to seek out other funding to be able to support those months. But we are talking to our partners to figure out the best solution. Like I said, the start dates for these projects predates, I would say, our staff and the current leadership of the COC. But in order to make improvements to this and to address this, we have to take a critical look at these projects and to figure out how to make that move. And the thing is, with any kind of federal funds, it's not as easy as saying we want to move the funds. It does have impacts that requires thoughtful review and strategy in terms of implementing those changes. In the next challenge, and I think this comes in terms of the eviction pieces, or eviction, the questions about evictions, some of the COC projects that we have are old legacy shelter plus care projects. And so we have a number of projects that, so typically, our permanent supportive housing should include a budget that includes rental assistance and support services, and a lot of the CO projects are not set up that way. And so some of the feedback that we've heard from providers, and not to say that we, that, that it's an excuse, but I think I can understand kind of the challenges with it, is that because their budgets don't include the support services, that the level of case management services weren't there, and sometimes they weren't aware of evictions happening. I think regardless of that, we do have to make improvements in terms of not only the work that we're doing with our providers and to make sure that, you know, when these issues of evictions or issue, even issues with landlords come up, that one, the providers are addressing that. But what we may need to do is look at our current COC projects and figure out how to right-size that. But like I said, these are federal funds. There are regulations that go into making changes to that, which have to happen in the program competition, and that's what we would need to work with, with the COC, which could mean that, you know, there's some steps that need to happen, and we have to look at outcomes, because it's not as easy as changing a project, because it's going to impact the system as a whole. But that work will happen after the 2023 program competitions done, where we'll sit down with the COC and go over what our options are and how we move forward with making the appropriate changes to these projects. And then the third challenge on this page is the financial management is not in alignment with 24 CFR 200. And so, you know, upon coming into Baltimore and into the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, there were a number of challenges within, within the department in terms of making sure that we're in full compliance with our federal funding. We did experience high turnover, which is another challenge that we will address. But in addition to turnover, it's also training staff to really understand the federal regulations, not only with the COC project, but also with the 24 CFR 200. And so we are working to actively make those changes and to make the, to make the, I would say, improvements that we need to in terms of our financial management. We're working with the Department of Finance, who will work with us to ensure proper budgeting of the continuum of care grant to align with expenditures with the city's fiscal year and ensure that compliance through our monthly spend down and analysis and reconciliation of city and federal grant systems happens. We want to make sure that whatever, whatever we're drawing from our HUD system and ELOX reconciles with what's in Workday, which is a new system and has had its challenges, but we're actively working with the Department of Finance to fix those. And I'm going to have Roland handle the next couple of pages.
So to continue with the challenges and solutions, we have COVID and frequent leadership changes impacted staffing at MOHS, and this isn't unique to just Baltimore, this is a national phenomenon. Our solution is we've hired one FTE in August. We're currently interviewing our account supervisors. We have five candidates, we have six candidates for the accountants. We are working with Robert Half to bring on temporary accountants, and we're conducting skills up training with program compliance staff. In addition, I'm working closely with the team to ensure that we have regular meetings for information sharing and to build what we call a spree decor within MOHS. Knowledge gap, the challenge is that we have staff who are experienced in ministry, excuse me, the knowledge gap with staff who have the experience administering continuum of care and/or federal fundings are difficult to find. It's a unique niche, but what we're working to do is identify what those skill gaps are and do the appropriate TA training with both HUD and also providing the TA training to our providers. I think that what, that was, it's an investment in our people to upskill and also give them the tools to be successful in their roles. And we didn't have written standard operating procedures. We're working with HUD TA to develop these SOPs. That was initiated in December of 2022. We're finalizing our SOPs to be completed by the 15th of October. And we conducted beta training with providers and end-user input on 6/29/23 and on 9/6/2023. And we're updating our monitoring process inclusive of evidence-based methodologies. Next slide, please. In regards to the technical skill gaps with our staff, we are working with program compliance and program staff to meet with providers to offer the technical assistance that's needed, as well as deepen our relationships with our providers. We want to be able to provide that responsive care and support to our providers, and that comes through, it's even enhanced when you have a good relationship with the providers and staff. MOHS has implemented an annual provider training, and our first provider training took place on 6/28/23. And working with HUD, there's going to be a TA provided for skill training for fiscal and compliance staff. That is, we're creating deeper relationships with HUD, and I am the liaison for our HUD team and MOHS. Understanding how administrative functions affect programs and the outcomes of people experiencing homelessness, what we're doing is work to break down the silos and create a better understanding of how services link to the housing community. We're also working to continue the work with the COC to make system-wide improvements to Baltimore City's homeless response system and our coordinated entry systems. And we're also working with the COC and MOHS to continue to participate in community solutions built for Zero Movement. And that next learning session is going to be 9/20 through 9/22. Increase housing opportunities and landlord engagement. We're going to support the implementation of the Strategic Investment Plan published in March of 2022. MOHS will launch the Landlord Incentive Fund on September 2023, and we have the MOHS will launch the Flex Fund in October of this year. That concludes our identification of challenges and solutions. I really want to turn it back over to you.
Sure, and so, you know, in terms of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, our goal is always to work towards reducing and ending homelessness and meaning, and looking at how our system could be a lot more efficient in terms of getting people access to housing. I know that as an organization, we've done a lot to support really that partnership to housing and utilizing our ARPA funds to really focus on that bridge to housing, which I know has been a stronger voice within the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services than it's ever been, and we continue to support that. Our goal is to continue to make improvements. We do not want to see people have to go through evictions, but we know there are a lot of things that not only our department, but our community needs to improve upon, and I would say even at a state level, because I know Maryland has a very high rate of evictions regardless. And so it's going to require a lot of advocacy, but certainly, we will always strive to make the appropriate improvements so that we can help people really get back on track and get their lives together. But it's not an easy process. There's a lot of challenges that we have faced, we will continue to face, and we'll continue to look at solutions. But we know that we're making progress, and we appreciate your time and listening to our presentation and look forward to your questions at this point in time.
Thank you, Madam Director, Mr. Chief of Staff. I want to do something a little unconventional. We're going to go to public testimony before we jump into questions. There's only a couple of folks that have signed up to provide public testimony, and the reason is ultimately, we're here because of the public. We're here as council members, I'm pretty sure, not just from our office, but we can all speak to the landlords or the residents that have reached out. I mean, obviously, we've seen the media reports on this, so really want to hear from them. I guess before we go directly into the couple of folks that have signed up to talk about their experiences or their concerns today, want to make sure that we're providing you, Director, the opportunity to directly hit the nail on the head and tell us, one, what the problem was, two, what is the problem? Like, you know, is the problem bigger than what we know about today? And three, you know, what has been done and will continue to be done for it to be addressed? You know, definitely appreciate going over kind of the budget and going over kind of the allocation of funding and where the money's coming in. Definitely appreciate going over kind of some of the operational procedures and some of the issues around personnel. But just germane to this issue, I think, is really about that timeline, and it's really about the lack of payment and maybe the lack of coordination and the lack of, of understanding on all parts throughout the board. So if we could just like explicitly hit that nail on the head and kind of run us through that, so everyone's on the same page, you know, moving forward during this hearing.
So I would say, I mean, the biggest reason is the contract delays. There is a huge gap, like even with our attempts to start the contracting process earlier, there still is a huge gap between the time that those earlier grants start and then our ability to execute the contract. I believe that we will have a solution in terms of addressing those contract delays, whether... whether it's working with Department of Finance in terms of a solution which would accommodate the early start dates or if it's working with the COC to see if we need to move the start dates to a later time. But I would say in terms of those contract delays, it's always at the start of the new contracts that that we're hearing. Like, that's where the pain point is with not only our providers, but with the landlords in our community. I would also say that, you know, there has to be a lot of work in terms of the systems work that we do. It's not only just having a coordinated entry system. All of like payments to providers, the way providers do services to people experiencing homelessness and our ability to create a flow to our system. That's all systems work. They all play a role in this. And I think having not only, and I know our COC is very committed to making the appropriate improvements, but it's knowing our system and how those things connect and how they work together. I would say as a system, inviting the housing community into these conversations and figuring out how to better work with them is, from a systems perspective, is new territory. When I came on board at the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, we didn't even have a housing program manager. Everything was focused on emergency shelter and outreach. And so, our ability to get people into housing, you know, from a departmental standpoint, wasn't strong because we didn't have the appropriate staff directed towards that, nor did we have the resources to be able to do that. I would say that we are beginning to get those resources. And I think our strategic investment plan that we did when I first started identified where those critical investment areas that we're working to implement those. But it does take time to put everyone in place. It is a culture shift, so it does take time and change. We know from a human perspective is not an easy thing. And I would say that there are a lot of things that predated me and my administration that, you know, they're challenging things to address. And it's hard to, you know, given that we have real human issues and then we have the administrative, some of the things were kicked down the road, and we're at the point where it can't be kicked any further, and we have to bite the bullet and address those. And so, we have. In one example, this is the heirs issue. And so, I know that one of the questions that has been posed is, well, why doesn't the city just pay the rents to the landlord? And well, first, we don't have, our contract is with the provider. The relationship with the tenant and the landlord is with that provider. And so, we have a contractual relationship to do so. In working in other cities, unless you're a small rural community, and I think even then, it's a question. Most cities work with providers or they find a third-party kind of housing broker to help with the housing placement. And typically, they take on the rents with that. For a city entity to take on paying landlords directly, you know, I don't want to be critical of any one city, but, you know, government doesn't always lend to really fast payment on a lot of things. And so, it would be, one, not a good move, I think, for city government to step into that role. And two, we don't have the staffing to step into that role of handling rental payments. We just don't have the staff. We had to step into that role when the heirs issue came up. However, the reason why we took on the role is because those contracts, and it was a year contract, was transferred over to MOHS. We also knew that if we sat down to try and identify a provider to be able to issue this, it would take a long time, unfortunately, to get that provider. And we already knew that heirs was already late and rents three to six months. And so, we wanted to make sure, one, that people that were in the heirs project weren't impacted by that. And so, my staff, and then we eventually hired two temporary staff through the contracts that were transferred to us to be able to handle back rents and then pay current rent as we worked to transition them within the COC to another project. We started with identifying 450 households, and we're down to our last 23 to figure out where they're going. But we took on that responsibility because there was a contract for it, and that was a timing issue. But it wouldn't be something that I would want MOHS to take long term. Where I see the improvement happening is really working with our providers. I think understanding the system and really understanding the housing piece of this and what the landlords go through, because at the end of the day, it's a business. They have to get their payments timely. And I know that it's a lot of work to work with clients through their housing crisis, but there has to be that understanding. And I think that's where a lot of our work in terms of technical assistance support can be provided as a whole to our housing providers and where we can make improvements, not only as a department in terms of providing that TA, but as a COC and making sure that the housing community really is brought into this more and understands their role. And then ultimately, it's the evictions. It is killing us as a community. And it's not just the challenges we see. What we see in terms of the payment issues, which I am very committed to fixing and to correcting those on our side at the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, but it's a lot more pervasive than what we're experiencing and needs to be addressed as a community. That while we're a part of it as a department, it is a systemic issue, not only for Baltimore City, but for the state. And so, Council President, did I answer your question or?
Yeah, I mean, again, I just wanted to provide you an opportunity to, I guess, kind of, you know, address the issue. I think the biggest concern is, I guess, the reoccurring issue. This is not a new issue, right? It kind of happens every single year. I guess folks feel the same calls. The landlords have the same pressures. The tenants get the same level of stress. And it doesn't seem like it's maybe like, you know, a personnel or about not enough employees. It just seems more about like, you know, seeing a core competency of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services is to ensure that we don't put that anxiety in the system. And what are the things that we can do to prevent them, right? So I think that that's what we're going to talk about today and what we really want to get into today. So I just want to give you that opportunity. Again, I'm going to take an unconventional way of kind of handling this, folks. There are only a couple people that are signed up from the general public. So we're going to go to them first so we can directly hear from them. I think that maybe that'll help kind of inform our questions as well as ensure that we get some of the right dialogue back and forth with us and the administration. So that's why we're going to do that to the general public. There will be an opportunity to speak after we do this first, the next round of questions. So if you are not signed up yet and you still would like to sign up, you still will have the ability to sign up. Of those who have come and already signed up, we're going to go to them first. The first name I have is Ms. Andrea Campo. Everyone will be provided two minutes to provide testimony. If you could state your name, any organization, and then your two minutes will start. You have to press the right button, and it should be red. There it is, all yours.
Good morning. Thank you so much, Council President Mosby. And I'd like to specifically thank Councilwoman Ramos for bringing this to the city council. This problem is systemic. This problem has been going on, that I know of, for nearly two decades. Twenty years we have been dealing with this problem. So to hear that it's a staffing or that it's an annual contract that we can't meet annually really feels a bit disingenuous. We have small landlords, which I have reached out to MOHS. I guarantee you, if I ask any of them on their staff, they know me by name because this is the amount of time. Same with Councilwoman Ramos's, folks. I have reached out to you, Councilwoman Conway, and your staff many times for help. So what I'm saying is that it is very difficult to have trust any longer as a small landlord when we are asked to financially support many families with no funds. Last year and this year have been particularly egregious. They are always, every single year, in 20 years, been behind between one and three months. The last two years, last year, they paid rent exactly two times. Two times. To date, I have been paid for April's rent. It is September 12th. I got my very first communication from the direct, from MOHS in August. So this thing of we're communicating directly, I don't know where that communication is going because it is not going to the providers and it's not going to the landlords. Because I assure you that the providers are sending along exactly what comes from MOHS. Because all it says is in an email is "from MOHS", and they send the exact communication. As of Friday, CHA, which is one of the providers we're talking about, and MHS, who claimed had very good conversations and have, quote, "worked everything out", were still fighting through me about who was telling what, that they didn't have the same story. They were still finger pointing as of Friday, September 8th. So no, as a small landlord and as the founder of the Small Landlords Collective, which has over 1,500 members, we put over $60 million in the economy in Baltimore City annually. I no longer have trust. I am no longer going to, I have stopped working with all these agencies. The nonprofits that I work with that are not these providers have stopped working with these agencies. And yes, my tenant of 12 years, I have been fighting to keep her because she doesn't want to leave. She is in a program that they claim what they do is take care of people with mental health issues. She has been hospitalized multiple times during this process because she's so stressed out. And I have been fighting to keep her, not because anybody's paying her rent, because she does not deserve this. There is no care, and the one thing they can't even manage to pull off is the shelter part. There's only two pieces of that. Shelter, which would be paying your rent, and care, which would be caring for the tenant.
Thank you, Ms. Campo.
Neither is happening.
Thank you so much. The next person that's signed up currently is Beth Benner.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Beth Benner. I'm the Executive Director of the Women's Housing Coalition. And as we all know here, housing is healthcare. Housing is the most cost-effective way to approach this issue. And it's the best solution for the residents. Adding stress and trauma to their lives is not the way to go. I've been the director here since 2014, and I have to say, it's been messy since the day I started. It got terrible before COVID, and it's never improved. What I will say is in the last few weeks, we're starting to see some responsiveness, but it's really hard to trust that as we move forward. The issues are all around the place. It's in payments. I've been as much as five months behind in getting my rents paid. And what you're asking us to do, as the woman before me said, is ride on the backs of landlords. Those who don't are basically scratching for money where it doesn't exist. And I can honestly say, I happen to be one of the landlords that's been able to keep up with my rents. But that's not by begging landlords for an extra 10 days, an extra two weeks, an extra month. But we always try to, if we can make payroll, we always try to make our rents after that. And that's not the way I should be running my organization. And I should be really putting more money towards services as we're going through there. But since case management is our number-one service, that is the best decisions we can make. But you're putting EDs in the position where they have to make terrible, terrible decisions. I knew back in December that I was going to have a problem with my contract being renewed on May 1. I also knew in 2015, when I had January contracts, that we were going to have that problem. And back then, the city used to bridge us. The city would put in a temporary contract so that we didn't have to advance rents like we did. For the last several years, it is not uncommon to have four or five months' worth of back rents. Communication is a problem. A lot of times, what's going on is we send emails. We don't hear what's going on. When we do, we're told, oh, you didn't send this form in. We're like, well, what form is that? We were never asked to send that in. Or, I gave you all that information. You're just asking me to drop that into now your Excel spreadsheet as opposed to the reports that come off my system. We had a training this year that really felt like they didn't hear what was going on and they didn't really understand what it took to pull together financial information. And to a person in the room that was being trained, we were all concerned, upset, and trying to get feedback as we're going through that. I understand we're going to get an answer now, but we're still struggling. We're not proactive here as a city, and there's no reason why we can't be. I personally believe that what we're doing to residents is just wrong. And once again, because I'm not a provider that's in that position, I'm lucky.
Thank you, Ms. Benner. If you could take 15 seconds to wrap up.
Thank you.
You can have 15 more seconds to finish close up.
I think that what we have to do is realize that landlord engagement is paying people on time. We can find the landlords, but the landlords don't trust the process. I personally have a board member who will not participate in this program anymore. He was not with our program, but with another one. And he basically said, even if it was you, Beth, I would not rent to anybody under an MOHS contract anymore.
Thank you.
It's a terrible situation.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up, we have Denise Shirin. Denise?
Hello, I just wanted to come up and share my experience. I am a private landlord, and I do have one unit rented to Community Housing Associates. I had previously rented many more units through that program, but because of the difficulties in getting rent and terrible communication, I've steered away from renting any further units to this organization. So, I mean, I did bring copies of lease ledger showing to date the balances that I'm owed, if I can pass those to anyone. But again, I just-
If you could give that to committee, right here.
I know no one has really talked about numbers yet, but just, you know, I'm a small landlord, and I do my best to keep up with my properties. And, you know, we go through the inspections. We keep up with repairs, maintenance, and it's very tough to do when we're not getting paid the rent. And we're keeping up with our property taxes that are increasing, property insurance that's increasing. So we have all these costs that are constantly going up, and it's very imperative we get the rent. So just to, I know no one's talked about numbers yet, but just for my one unit that I have rented through Community Housing Associates, I'm owed a total of $10,850, which includes $1,550 of a security deposit that I never received. And I'm also owed for the same property, but a previous tenant, they had in there $3,583. I do have another unit that I had rented to them. They no longer rent it because they gave it up back in May of 2023. But I'm still owed almost $3,000 for that unit. So we're doing our best as landlords. I'm also a real estate broker and property manager. And as the previous lady stated, I'm in the same boat where I have other owners that I'm responsible for collecting rents. And I steer them away from these programs now. We'll rent to the Housing Authority Baltimore City, but that's the only program I recommend that they provide housing for. So.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Next up, Kyle Long.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm a social worker who works with families in Baltimore City. And it's really concerning to me to hear, like, this testimony is, you know, we're providing services and trying to support families with housing, and to hear that these programs aren't working. I think, you know, especially with like housing becoming increasingly insecure, I know that's like a point of concern for me. And I also just have a question too. I'm wondering how, yeah, I know there's been like the announcement that $10 million was cut from, I guess, like, yeah, funding source to MOHS. And I'm just kind of concerned how that will impact service delivery for our families. And just sort of wondering if folks could speak to that and how this also ties in with like how the ARPA funds will be appropriated too. I know there's a lot of, yeah, need for housing. And I'm just concerned hearing all of this and sort of the testimony from other speakers here today that this will impact sort of these programs and the supports that are desperately needed for citizens of Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, James Crawford Jr.
Good morning. I'm James Crawford Jr.
I'm James Crawford Jr. I'm with Housing Our Neighbors. And we have a problem with the fact that ten million dollars got turned back into the government, you know, when we have people sleeping on the streets. We don't see any transparency in M O H S and there's no accountability there. Whoever did that, whoever was on watch for that, they dropped the ball terribly. We could have put a lot of people in the housing. And the reason I'm concerned about that ten million dollars is because we have all this offer money that is sitting around that is tied sincerely to also. And we haven't heard anything being done with that. I know they talked about buying a couple of hotels and that was when the money first came out, but since then, there's been very little movement with that money. We need to know how much money has been spent, how much money is left, and when this money is going to get out the door so that the money doesn't get sent back to the government again. Because we're never going to get a chance to get this kind of money again. You know, this is a chance to put people that are with low income and no income in the housing. We believe that housing is a human right. We believe that housing is also healthcare. You know, we can't have people sleeping on the streets. You know, it's just as dangerous to sleep on the streets in the summertime as it is to sleep on the streets in the wintertime. You know, no one should have to live on the streets. And if we have the money to put people in the housing, let's use that money to do that. Let's not sit on our behinds and calculate or speculate or put the money in a fund and draw off the interest of it, because that's the only thing I can see being done. Because what was supposed to be done with the money is not being done. And it's up to you as councilpeople and to get her to do her job. Thank you.
Next up, I see, is it Kimberly Brown and maybe Sandra Jones? It seems like you guys put it in the same box. Not sure if that's one or two. And for the record, I would like to acknowledge some of our other colleagues who've joined us. Madam Vice President Sharon Green Middleton has joined, as well as Chairwoman McCray and Councilman James Torrance. Did I miss someone else? Yeah, I got Costello. Yeah. At this time, you can begin. You have two minutes. You guys are gonna, it's two testimonies? Okay, you can't, okay, yes.
Good morning, President Mosley and council members. My name is Kimberly Brown and beside me is my mother, Sandra Jones. My mother is here to speak for me as I have developed throat cancer. I was an inpatient at John Hopkins three separate times from July and August. The first visit after surgery, I received my fifth rent court notice. My mother attended for me. I was very upset she had to do that. In August, right after my third surgery, I received an eviction notice indicating I had to be out by eight twenty-nine, and that was on eight seven. Dayspring never sent a representative on our behalf to rent court. We had no control over this. We, as my mother and I, attempted to talk to Dayspring and was told to leave the premises and go outside of the building, knowing she was not in her office. The city of Baltimore and Dayspring made a commitment to us years ago. If we followed their transitional, if we followed their rules, maintained a healthy lifestyle, we would be called in to have transition to our own apartments or town homes called Shelter Plus. We are all, we all worked very hard to be able to be mothers again to our children. My child is fifteen years old with emotional problems. These past few months have been very traumatizing to her, not knowing where she may live. What do you think would happen to these mothers and precious children if they were put out on the streets? All the years of working on being a good parent and a person in general would be impossible to maintain. Skyline Properties has shown patience and understanding of our situation. They have attempted on their own to contact Dayspring and the mayor's office as we have. We went a couple weeks ago and we did not get past the receptionist. And Dayspring, Skyline has attempted to call the mayor's office. They never got a call back, ever. I sincerely do not believe our children should suffer for the accounting error of ten million dollars that Baltimore desperately needed. Thank you.
No, thank you so much for that testimony.
And I'm really hopeful that something can be done for these women. I've seen all these women and all these precious babies. It breaks my heart. And a lot of them don't have families. They cannot be thrown out on the street.
Again, thank you so much for that testimony. So again, we went a little bit out of order. Hopefully, colleagues, you understood the reason why. I just thought it was important for us to provide the human aspect of what our citizens are going through, have been going through, and the problem and challenges of the reason that we are here today. Director Augustine, just a couple quick questions from me and then we're going to go into council questions. One, how much is owed and backed? Do we know, do we have a number for that?
Council President, as of right now, our records are indicating that we are current through August and are processing September's payments. So in regards to a dollar amount of back owed?
Go to police station.
I'll confirm with that and circle back to the council.
So we, you guys come to this here and we do not know how much we owe and back?
My team has identified that we are not back owed, that we are current. So I'll confirm and make sure that my team here, we'll get that information today.
And I just want to reiterate that when you talk about current, this is in terms of paying the reimbursements of our C O C providers. The C O C providers will also have to then pay the landlords, which has been an issue.
That's the heirs issue. I don't want to put anybody on the spot.
No, it's a pretty, I would say it's a pretty substantial issue with not all of our providers, but some of our providers and some that have been mentioned here in the public testimony today.
Got you. Now, are there processes in place is when providers get behind like that, where we've given them the money and it hasn't trickled down to the landlord?
Well, we can't reimburse unless they give us an accurate billing. And we've been working very hard, you know, one, we're making improvements with our internal systems, with our program compliance and fiscal teams, which we have had tremendous turnover in. But in order for us to be able to pay a provider, we need to get the billing in from them. And it has to have the appropriate supporting documentation. Like Beth Benner said, we did have a provider meeting. We continue to work and make improvements on that and work with our providers to ensure that we get that accurate. Typically, once we get a full and complete billing, the payment is issued within thirty days, sometimes sooner than that. And we have some, like I said, we have some providers that are really good about getting their billings in on time and in a timely manner. And then we have some providers that really struggle with it.
Does the city keep eviction data associated with these programs?
In terms of this, so when we pay in a billing, we have to show that a payment was made, especially with our C O C projects. A decision was made that predates me to advance rental payments to them, but I don't think it's been that helpful in this situation, especially when you're not turning in your billings accurately or timely. We've been working very closely with those providers, providing T A to make those improvements. Our providers also have a large amount of T A, or sorry, turnover with their fiscal staff as well. And so that's some of the challenges that we've seen, but we help them to get those billings into us timely and we try to process those as quickly as we can.
Have there been any evictions as a result of these concerns that we've heard today?
We try, the evictions that we're aware of, we've intervened and tried to step in, heirs being probably the most significant.
That's why I brought them up earlier.
Issue, but then we've had issues with Dayspring, C H A, Community Housing Associates, that we've worked to intervene and work with our providers to get their billings in so that those rental payments could be made. We've also, in heirs, we're stepping in to even appear in court and work with legal services to try and prevent those evictions from happening.
Have there been any evictions associated with the problems we're talking about today?
I do not have any information that I'm aware of, but it, you know, it's possible.
Thank you. Next, we're going to turn it over to Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. My understanding is that grant agreements between HUD and M O H S cannot be executed until any outstanding issues and conditions that HUD has brought to M O H S's attention have been satisfied. And further, that there were issues and conditions that were sent over by HUD in June of 2023. Can you talk about what those issues and conditions were and what the status of remediating those are?
Sure. So in terms of issues and conditions, which are a typical part of the C O C contracting or grant agreement process, so the issues and conditions that were issued by HUD were in terms of our fiscal responsibilities regarding the payments due to the extreme turnover we've had with our staff and our ability to draw in terms of E L O Cs. And then to kind of address some of those, so to finish, in terms of the process, we have to respond to the issues and conditions and then HUD will issue the grant agreement. The other issue and condition that came up as well was updating the match letter. And so for a lot of our C O C projects, there is a match that is required, twenty-five percent minus leasing. We send that before a grant is executed. It's obtained from the provider to be able to send to HUD to satisfy the issues and conditions.
Thank you, Director. That's very helpful context. Back to the original question, what's the status of remediating those issues that HUD has brought to our attention?
So we, so right now, we're in the program competition, but we're working to satisfy those grant agreements or satisfy the issues and conditions to get our grant agreements. To date, we have fifteen of the forty. So we've satisfied at least fifteen of the issues and conditions to get the grant agreements going. And so we're working to get those going for the rest of those. But with our C O C projects, they all have different start dates. In terms of HUD and delays, this is not something just specific to Baltimore. It's something that is seen nationwide. And in the twenty years that I've been dealing with homeless services and these issues, there's only one year that I've ever seen HUD ever be on time with it.
So do we have an estimated timeframe for the remediation of the outstanding twenty-five that I believe you referenced?
So there's fourteen grant agreements. So typically, our CPD rep issues the issues and conditions. We work to satisfy those until those are resolved. And so it's kind of a back and forth with our CPD rep to get that. But we have fifteen grant agreements, so those have been resolved for those fifteen. I'm not sure what's outstanding right now, but we'll work to get those to HUD as quickly as we can.
Can you get the committee a written summary of the status for those remaining twenty-five? So I assume it's twenty-five separate grant agreements that we're seeking to execute, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can get you what we have so far.
Thank you. And my second question's around ten million dollars that's been referenced in the media and several times today. And perhaps you can, in addition to answering this question, can correct any misconceptions that I may have. My understanding is that of the amount that HUD awarded the city in fiscal year 2020, ten million dollars has not been drawn by the city through the E L O C system to capture that money from HUD after we have reimbursed, or after providers have provided ten million dollars' worth of services. And my understanding is that those services were to be provided between May of 2021 and April of 2022, plus or minus, and that we are now approximately sixteen months beyond the period for when those services were to have been provided. I further understand that there is usually a ninety-day grace period after the end of that one-year term, which would have brought us into plus or minus July or August of 22, and that we have exceeded the timeframe for reimbursement so grossly that that triggered the mayor to send a letter to the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development. My understanding is further that within the E L O C system, that that ten million dollars is no longer available, meaning that HUD has deobligated or essentially taken that money back. Is that understanding correct?
Yes. So I'm going to clarify a few points, just so that there is a better understanding of continuum of care funding. And so HUD, when they look at draws for any C O C, they do it through the E L O C system. And so your understanding of, yes, the E L O Cs and whatever is not drawn does get recaptured. However, there are some caveats to that. When we reconcile, so we did have a meeting with HUD. They shared with us their concerns in terms of the E L O Cs draws and slow C O C spending. And so when we went to go look into the situation more, we identified that about five point eight million was funds that we paid providers of that amount that they stated. And so let me back up. So we saw that there was about eleven million between FY twenty and twenty-one that hadn't been drawn from E L O Cs. When we went to go look into the E L O Cs and investigated even more, of that eleven million, about five point eight was what we had paid out to providers, but we didn't draw from E L O Cs. And the reason why we didn't draw from E L O Cs was that we had some challenges in terms of being able to access E L O Cs. We had, one, a lot of turnover within our fiscal staff, which typically is the staff that has E L O Cs access. And then to the point where I had to gain E L O Cs access, which in my twenty years, never had to do that. But that's how we needed to do it to be able to get access to the system, to be able to make draws. It took a lot, it took a long time from HUD to get that E L O Cs access as well. The other five million or so, so every year, there is a certain amount of underspend. This is definitely a growth area within our continuum of care and working with our providers to help spend down those funds a little more effectively so that we lessen that gap. But there could be underspend because if we do our budgets based on fair market rents and we find more affordable rent, we're going to have some funding on the table. Some of our projects opt to over lease, but there's going to be some money left. And so in terms of the draws for E L O Cs, like we paid our providers, we just didn't pay ourselves because of our challenges with our access to E L O Cs and our staff turnover, which we're correcting in terms of hiring new staff and ensuring that those new fiscal staff have access to E L O Cs and they start the forms and get that approved right away. But then also working with our continuum of care and our providers to make sure that they're spending their funds and they're maximizing the spend out of that. And then one more thing. Every year in the program competition, the continuum of care has the ability to reallocate any kind of funding that has been unspent. So what could happen during the program competition? So while HUD will recapture funding annually, which we don't want to see, those funds don't permanently leave our community and could be reconsidered in reallocation in the next year's competition. Our FY twenty-two, we got our total allocation. We get extra points within the program competition for reallocation. It's not what I want to see as a community. I want to see us because we do have a high need to be able to spend fully those funds. I want to see us because we do have a high need to be able to spend fully those funds, but that is also built into the system as well.
Thank you. So, the $10 million in total, some of the two buckets that you had categorized them in, assuming that we knew about this back in July or August of 2022, is this something that MOHS discovered, or is this something that HUD brought to our attention?
So, HUD brought, but it was a concern that we've had, and we were working with our HUD field office in terms of, one, making sure administratively that, you know, we want to ensure that we're spending down these grants. And we were meeting with HUD biweekly to discuss a variety of issues. This came, you know, I know this is a concern because I've been working in homeless services for quite some time. And so, being able to make the necessary improvements to our administrative backend is an important piece to this. But it was really more fully out in front and center in terms of this around, I would say, the beginning of May and June is when we were talking about this with HUD and--
Of '22 or '23?
Of '23.
So, these were first services provided through April of '22, and we began talking to HUD about this a year later?
This is when the concerns were elevated from the SNAP's office to us was in, from our CPD rep in May '23. But in terms of spend down and, you know, making sure that we spend all our COC funds, that's always been a concern of the administration and our ability in terms of a department, so.
And at what juncture did you or your office inform the mayor's office that this problem existed? At what point in time?
So, in terms of the more recent, like, I've always talked with the mayor's offices in terms of the challenges, but I would say from the awareness of the HUD, once I got the notice, I immediately informed my deputy mayor.
When was that?
So, that happened, so the meeting with my staff and the HUD office happened the first week of May. Once, and I was actually on vacation when that discussion happened, but when I immediately came back and understood how that conversation happened, I contacted my deputy mayor in terms of that. We were also notified by HUD that they wanted to meet June 15th, and she, our deputy mayor DeRosa, was in that meeting with us.
And last thing for our budget directors. So, we have $10 million, or this bucket of $10 million, which our providers have provided services, and we, the city of Baltimore, have reimbursed those providers for that $10 million. One, can you tell me where that, what bucket of funding that, within Treasury or wherever, where that came from? And two, what the consequences of, well, let's start with that. Where did that come from?
So, I think if I'm understanding your question correctly, you're asking, so the city incurred this $10 million of expenses, where's the revenue for it coming from? So, as part of the year-end closeout process, part of what the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services will do is review all of the expenditures in the grant funds and review sort of what is outstanding in terms of billable from those granting agencies. As part of that process, we, every year, we do identify some level of bad expense where there were charges and expenditures to grants that can't be reimbursed, and those costs end up having to be absorbed within the city's fund balance as part of the year-end actions that wipe out, you know, that happened as part of the annual financial report.
So, the $10 million was covered from fund balance?
Well, we're going through closeout right now, so we're working on reconciling out the grant funds and sort of comparing the, you know, what was actually expended versus the revenue that we were able to draw down or is still remaining, or is still sort of tagged as receivable revenue. And sort of whatever is deemed a bad expense will have to be absorbed within the city's general fund balance.
So, if we can't recoup the $10 million from HUD, that's going to come out of our fund balance?
That's correct.
And remind me again, what's the total we have in fund balance, plus or minus?
We are approximately, oh my goodness, about $100 million in fund balance.
Okay. And did MOHS talk to, at what point did MOHS talk to Finance about this?
We, I would have to go back to my notes to reference the first meeting I was involved in. It's been, it was during the summer months, but I can go back to my records to give you the exact time.
And you said HUD informed the city of this issue in late May?
Early May.
Early, not March or April, right? Early May?
Not that I was aware of. This was, you know, I was notified by my staff after I got back from vacation about that conversation. So, and, you know, the question to them was, does the director know about, you know, the challenges that you've raised in the meeting? And she had, our CPD rep, had said no.
And last and final question, has there been any outreach to the City Council President's Office, Ways and Means Committee, anyone on the council about this looming financial, I'll call it a risk for now, that exists? And I guess I'll start with Nina, Mayor's Office.
I don't believe to date that we've engaged the council on this issue specifically.
So, I'll reserve the bulk of my comments for later, but this entire fiasco is wildly concerning, puts the city's finances in jeopardy. I believe these are some of the similar issues that were identified in the Grants Management issues that were identified in the CAFER a few years back. It is very discouraging to learn today the extent of these issues, the breadth of them across this function of city government, and that these issues have not been addressed, that they put the city's finances, our AA bond rating, and all of those wonderful things that put us in a position to do the things that we need to do in jeopardy, and that the outreach to the City Council, to the City Council President, to the Ways and Means Committee, has been non-existent to date. My hope is that, moving forward, that that communication is going to ramp up, and there's going to be a newfound level of transparency in communication that occurs with the City Council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I have questions from Vice President Middleton, as well as Councilwoman Ramos, I see Chairman Bullock, Chairwoman McCray, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Torrance. This is basically everybody. All right. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to go to Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, then we're going to turn it over to Chairman Bullock, and then we're going to go to Councilwoman Ramos, and then from there, we're just going to go down the line. Just housekeeping notes, just moving in the order of folks that have been part of the issue behind the scene and helping to set us up today, so I want to make sure that they have the opportunity to get their questions out. Yes?
You know, I signed the box back there to testify, I didn't have an opportunity to. I just wouldn't know if I'd have a chance to--
Yes, so, thank you. Thanks for that question. So, the question for folks that are listening, will folks in the audience, as well as online, have an additional opportunity to testify? And that is yes. We did something unconventional. We went out of order for the folks that were initially signed up to testify, because I thought that, you know, their testimony would provide some level of color and would be germane to some of the questions that we're going to get today from our colleagues. After we finish our first round of questions from the City Council members, we're going to go back into public testimony, and you'll have an opportunity to speak. With that, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Listening to you, you, I guess consistently talk about how one of the central problems is staff turnover. And I'd like you to kind of explain how, you know, how that is really interfering and how it led to, you know, not payment of funds to providers. How is that, to me, it's really showing that there's an internal problem within your department?
So, I would say in terms of turnover, and, you know, definitely, we've seen a lot of changes with COVID and, you know, just how workplaces, but it does impact how we do things. I think essential to the work that we do at MOHS is really around, you know, making those reimbursement payments. And it's not just our staff, but it's also working with our providers that also have experienced a large amount of turnover as well. And so, we're working to make improvements. We're working to hire. We're working to increase training, because I think that's the other side of this, is that our COC funds aren't, it's not easy, it's not an easy program to administer, and we want to be able to support them. It's not where I want to be as an organization, but it's the reality of where we're at right now in terms of the staffing challenges we've had. We've made improvement in terms of hiring new staff and making sure that those training opportunities are there, but that does impact our ability to be able to move these payments forward. I'm not using it as an excuse, because we always need to strive to make these improvements and to do better, especially for those people that are experiencing homelessness, but it has been a challenge, and a challenge that I think, you know, is an outcome because of COVID. I would say that for our homeless providers, our housing providers, we're still dealing with COVID. We're seeing the fatigue of our staff. We also understand that there's challenges in terms of being able to pay our staff. The National Alliance came out with a new report talking about wages for frontline staff and how they're the lowest paid and also experiencing housing crises. And so, I can understand why there's a lot of turnover in it, but we're working as an agency, working with our partners within the city, not only the Department of Finance, but also Human Resources, to make those necessary improvements so that we don't have to face this ever again.
So, in my second question, you know, listening to all this, HUD plays a very important role. I remember way back in the Rollins-Blake administration when a whole lot of money, I want to say roughly 12 million, was returned. And we don't want, we don't want to see that ever again. That was a very terrible heartfelt experience. I'm hoping, and please answer that, has, have you had to give back any money thus far to HUD because of this problem that we're having with payment?
So, in terms of giving back money, and this speaks to the administrative challenges that I think MOHS has had, that I inherited when I took over the position, with, you know, every community experience underfunded. And I want to clarify, in terms of the missing 10 million, like I said, 5.8 was reimbursed to our providers for the services they perform. The other amount, which underspend, you know, spend that just didn't happen within the project, that would have been recaptured by HUD anyway. And so, the impact to the city isn't the full 10 million. I want to see us spend every single dime. Before I went into public sector, I was a fundraiser, working in nonprofits. So, I know how hard it is to be able to secure those funds. And so, I want to see our community, our providers are the ones that do the services. They're the ones that we are reimbursing. They're the ones spending the funds. We already know that we need more of it in our community to be able to end homelessness. So, I will always support our ability to be able to spend the funds to its maximum so that we can, you know, in essence, secure more funding to be able to serve who we need to serve, because there's people experiencing homelessness and housing insecurity within our community. And so, in terms of giving back funds, the 5.8 was funds we didn't draw. The additional funds were funds that just weren't submitted for reimbursement. They were underspent. Like, those are funds that HUD will recapture. And so, in terms of giving back funds, those are already funds that HUD would have recaptured in terms of that.
Can the Finance Department add to that, dealing with the HUD? Are you keeping track? Or, you know, is there something you can add?
I mean, we're certainly in a support role. With MOHS under our current Grants Management approach, you know, agencies are in the lead in terms of working directly with the granting agencies on their individual grants. I think what Finance is focused on right now is working on reconciling all of these expenditures for the current fiscal year, getting an accurate assessment of what can still be billed, so that we can know sort of what is that remaining balance as we go into year-end close. And I do just want to clarify my statement on the fund balance, because I misspoke to Councilman Costello's question regarding the city's general fund fund balance. The number I had referenced was a previous year's net change in the fund balance. Coming into fiscal '23, which was the year that we ended back in June, the city's general fund fund balance was about $867 million. Now, I do just want to caveat that, that that does include restrictions for different things. Some of that is unrestricted. Some of it is assigned to different things, but the overall balance number is $867 million.
So, was, what, you're still answering my question, was there any money returned to HUD thus far?
Not that I'm aware of.
Director?
So, we did, there was a fund transfer of about $100,000. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can get that to you. It was from a previous monitoring in terms of asking for expenses that didn't have the supporting documentation to it. So, that was the only other amount that I know that had to be returned to HUD.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President. Before we go to Chairman Bullock and then Councilwoman Ramos, I have two new items added, I think fiscal year '23 closeout. If you could just make sure that Ways and Means and Finance and Performance are provided, whatever analysis you do specific to this regarding the fiscal '23 closeout. Do you expect timing on that?
So, the grant reconciliation work is undergoing and will be completed by, like I said, the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services over the next couple of months. I know that we're slated to come before the subcommittee to present on the final performance of fiscal '23. At this point, we'll be able to speak to the general fund piece, because there's still, there will still be a lot of reconciliation happening in some of the other parts of the city's budget. Deputy Director Mosades is here as well. She can speak more specifically about timelines, but I would estimate that we could give a more comprehensive briefing on the overall annual financial report, either closer to the end of the calendar year or right as we move into, right into the winter months.
Thank you. And then the fourth item that I have is any money that's been returned to date, I guess in the past three years. If you guys could identify and let us know that to Council Vice President's question. With that, we're going to go to Chairman Bullock. Chairman Bullock, the floor is yours.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I will say, I'm encouraged as the Chief of Staff has come on board that the standard operating procedures is something that's being addressed. It is a bit troubling that that was previously unwritten, but the fact that we're moving this direction, can you talk about-- Can you talk about to what extent it includes things like onboarding and succession as it relates to staffing?
Good morning, Councilman Bullock. It's inclusive of everything from onboarding to inspecting what we expect with payments, so and APRs, CAPRs, our regular invoices that are being paid on time. So we're looking to ensure that, to your question, the SOPs covered from the grant initiation to closeout. As I'm learning, we have a lot of tenured people on, on, on the team, and we're also working with other agencies for best practices, such as Department of Finance, multiple, multiple agencies we're working on. So it's, it's all inclusive.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. And I know you also mentioned some technical assistance and needs in terms of that, that gap, so glad to hear that it being addressed. The, the other piece, though, that I'm also curious about in the, in the slides and then even in our conversation most recently, there's been this collaboration between MOHS and the Department of Finance. Can you talk about what the relationship was like before versus where it is now? Because obviously it looks like we're in the need of a little bit more oversight and also just collaboration. Can you talk about what that looks like previously versus now?
Sure, and I, I would say that, you know, and I've only been with the agency a little over two and a half years. I know that Workday implementation has been a challenge, so I know Department of Finance, and we're, we were in the same boat in terms of getting that off the ground. But I would say that our relationship with Department of Finance is, is much stronger in terms of being able to think, to look at these issues, help create resolutions, support the work that we're doing on the, our standard operating procedures and the improvements that we're making within our department. We're also working with other departments. I would say, you know, of all the departments within the city, we're one of the most collaborative. Not only are we working internally on the administrative side with DHR, DOF, we work very closely with DDS, all, all of them, because what we do in terms of serving people experiencing homelessness touches all departments within the agency. So as we're making the administrative improvements and reaching out to our sister departments within the city, you know, we're also working on other initiatives that require partnership and collaboration.
Right, and obviously that's key. I think one of the challenges I think we're, we're seeing is that when people transition, that some of the information gets lost or is misplaced, and so I think it's important just for that, that continuity so that everybody's on, on the same page. And then as we look at the Finance Department, again, can you talk about the role that you, you have in terms of the support role in grant management? Do you envision that changing versus what it was before, being more robust?
Yeah, so I, I can speak a little bit about what it looks like in terms of how we're supporting from a budget and planning perspective. I would, you know, defer to Deputy Director Mosades because grant management is outside of the Bureau of Budget and, and Management Research. You know, within, within our team and through the, the budget analysts that works with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, we are working on making sure that we are aligning all of their different grant appropriations correctly in the budget so that, you know, once we go from budget adoption in June into, you know, implementing the budget after July 1st, we're doing everything we can to minimize or eliminate any delays that would be caused by setting up appropriations and whatnot. In fiscal '25, for all of the grant-related agencies, you're going to see us take steps to wherever we can sort of establish grants through the budget process. Again, so that we can, where we have these recurring grants that we know we're going to receive, that we have documentation on, that we can get those set up and moved into a place where, where folks are able to access that appropriation and to start spending down and to spend down correctly. My team and I are also working with the MOHS team to stand up different reporting tools that can help them as a management team ensure that the city's finance, what the actual expenditures that we're seeing on the city's financial system are in alignment with what they're seeing in the federal systems that are, that are, that are really driving their ability to draw down funds on a timely basis and that we're making sure that all of those things are in sync, so we have the same information. So again, I'm really focused on supporting Director Augustine around strong planning, strong reporting so that we can, can manage towards the budget. You know, there is a separate unit within the Department of Finance, the Grants Management Office, that is responsible for coordinating with agencies on some of these implementation issues. And I, again, those, those, that, that team falls within the Director's office. So I'm, I'm less close to, to speak to improvements and initiatives happening on that front.
Thank you.
Deputy CFO, you'd like to speak?
Good morning, Ioana Mosidis, Deputy Director of Finance. And I just want to support and add to what Deputy, or Chief, I'm sorry, Laura Larson, shared. First, I'd really like to start off by saying thank you. I know, I think Ms. Jones and Ms. Brown left. I heard Mr. Crawford, Mr. Crawford, speak about their personal experience with the program, and I really feel I would be remiss for not saying thank you. You are heard. This is an area where I started my career 20 years ago, in an area very different than the Department of Finance. But obviously, as in all things with Baltimore, we are one city and we all have a piece or a stake in this. So I thank you for your testimony. I will say overall, grants management historically in the city of Baltimore has been decentralized. And so we're looking at ways where it is appropriate in the grant lifecycle to standardize the process. And that goes across agencies, right? So our Health Department, MOCFS. I am thankful for the leadership of this administration and the city administrator in really spearheading and driving that effort. I want to talk a little about technology. And again, technology does not solve everything. Really, it's the accountants at the agency level. It's the program staff who are using the technology who are going to drive this. But it is important to recognize that really before August of 2022, if I wanted to know the status of a grant, what we had drawn down, what we had spent, I would go to an agency accountant who had a spreadsheet. And if that agency accountant left, we would hope that they had left that spreadsheet with someone and that it was properly named and properly saved. We had the information in our accounting system, but if you can imagine information rolling up and being manually put in and then trying to compare, it was that individual who controlled the spreadsheet who really knew where everything was. And that's part of the reason as a city, again, with the support of the administration and all of the agencies in the city, that we implemented Workday. And so in August 2022, we began to, we went live and we already had some grants in the system and then worked to get the new grants in the system. It's a seven-step process that our agencies know well of creating that grant award and then beginning to input beginning and end date. So if you can imagine before in our system, our accounting system, there wasn't a beginning and end date. You could bill continuously to that grant because unless you had the spreadsheet, you didn't know where it ended. So there is a lot of value in the technology that it's giving us a transparency we didn't have before, but that also means we have to train and we have to continually go back and look and say, is this meeting our needs? And clearly, given the gaps that we've identified, we have to continue to figure out how we use the system more effectively. We believe that there is, and already is, as Laura noted, a increased transparency in what we're able to see. I think there's further work to be done, and that's something that we're working on with the agencies. What reporting do you need? What information are you currently missing that would help your decision-making and your monitoring? So that work is being done, as I mentioned, it's really a citywide collaboration. The city administrator has citywide kind of meetings with the grant agencies with finance, and that's something that we'll continue to work at. And I am heartened by Director Augustine and her team in terms of some of the corrective actions they've put in place and what they've outlined and the questions that they're calling to ask. And I, I wanted to note that. And I'd be happy to answer any further questions if I could add to that.
No, thank you, Deputy CFO, as well as Chief. I think I called you Director a couple of times, too. With that, we're going to go to Councilwoman Ramos and then Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President, good morning. Mr. Selby, I have an email here from you dated 9/6/2023. My team had a very productive meeting with CHA to identify obstacles to on-time payment. We are implementing several corrective actions to get May through September invoices paid by next Wednesday, which would be tomorrow. And so your statement that you're current is not correct. And I'm wondering if that is actually going to be paid by tomorrow.
We're going, I'll confirm with my team. And we've done a lot of the reconciliation and review of the invoices. What we, we implemented was, on occasions where there was an issue with an invoice, we removed that item, we paid the invoice excluding that item so that it could be resubmitted for the following month. So we're trying to expedite the payments. As, as the information I've received from my team is that we are on target for all the payments being paid. There are two invoices that are in my Workday that need to be finalized, that my team flagged for us today. So I will confirm, but all indications are that we have made the progress of, of getting those invoices processed. If there's an issue, return it back, but not hold up the payment.
So tell me a little bit more about what errors you are finding. And is this because there's a new way of doing billing? Or is this something that is an ongoing issue with providers?
So in my seven weeks of experience with MOHS, what I'm understanding is, is that there were standards that we would look for. And if those billing items were not aligned with the contract or if there was a discrepancy on how the, the item was charged or calculated, our compliance team would work with the provider to address that. I've helped to facilitate several of those conference calls with our providers to talk through, not just email exchange, but talk through what the issues are and on occasion conduct a TA with those team members so that they can get it corrected. So I'll, I'll defer to my Director to talk about what predates me, but what we're working on is ensuring that we're creating consistency and, and, and working in partnership with our providers.
And how long has CHA been a part of the program?
Well, I know that they were a part of it before I came on board in 2021. In terms of a timeframe, I'm not sure, but can look that up. But they've been a partner for quite some time.
So you'd think that they'd be able to do this correctly?
Our hope is, is that, you know, and I know they've had some staff turnover as well, but I think there's kind of two things I want to add to this is that as part of figuring out our standard operating procedures, it's really taking a deep dive into looking at what is submitted for the billings monthly. And so taking a look, we request that we not only get an expense justification form, but then also monthly activity reports. Part of the provider training that Ms. Bennett had talked about was, one, you know, we were taking the extra steps to clarify that because I think that has been a challenge in terms of submitting billings and understanding what needed to be submitted and supporting documentation, and also figuring out how to streamline it because it shouldn't be a complicated system. But it would be a change to how we do things, and so we've been working to make those necessary fixes to it along with getting input from some of our providers in terms of not only what the challenges are, but what are some solutions to fix those items. And so I would say that it's twofold. You know, one, we've seen extreme turnover in the fiscal staff of a lot of our agencies, and so it's learning like what needs to be submitted. But then two, I think there's been historical challenges of the information submitted that we're actively working on to fix and figure out how to streamline.
So in emails from CHA, they, you know, claim that, you know, there hasn't been a lot of communication from the agency. And so I just want to understand that we're, the payment will be made tomorrow so that our landlords can get paid and people aren't being evicted. So I'm, I'm hoping that we will get an email from you confirming that the payment was made tomorrow. The other, you know, piece of that is understanding, I didn't see in the slide where you had the timeline, where CHA is in that timeline in terms of, are they a provider that gets, that has a date or an early start date? Or are they not?
They are, I believe, and I think that was one of the ones because, you know, this was just a visual representation, but their actual, I think their grant starts April 1st.
Mm-hmm. And so just going on to that piece around the timing, you had mentioned that you want to move everybody, all the contracts to start on July 1. Is that correct?
Or after.
Or after?
Yeah.
And that for the first year to do that, if we do that, that there would be a gap that the city would then have to provide? And that dollar amount, do we know what that dollar amount is?
It's a, I believe it's about 2.1 million to be able to move the 10 projects to a later start date. I mean, I think we kind of figured if it would be July 1, but that would be a lot to have all the projects. I don't know, we would have to look at the feasibility of that. But in talking to Department of Finance, there might be another workaround that we can explore that that wouldn't, we wouldn't have to incur that cost if, if we decide to look at a multi-year grant or some sort of other approval process to be able to support the COC grant, knowing that we get the renewals every year. And we may not have to move those start dates. But we're going to explore all our options to make sure that we have the best option, that we take the appropriate steps.
And we would need notice ahead of time, you know, what that amount is going to look like and what, how that's going to be operated, if that's the way you, you move in that direction. So if we can report back to the committee, you know, how you're going to fix that, that would be, that would be great. I have one question, do we have another round? Okay. The other question I had was going back to what the Director was talking about, Deputy Director was talking about in terms of the interaction between the ELOCs and Workday. When we were putting together the Fair Housing Action Center when I was at CDN, I, ELOCs is really difficult and crazy, so I get it. But you have to have more, you should have more than one person, you know, who's authorized. But I also understand that there wasn't actually interaction between ELOCs and Workday or however the person is, or that the contracts weren't even uploaded onto Workday until last year. Is that correct?
Yes, Councilwoman. So Workday for Phase 2, the financial system, went live in August of 2022. There was an initial load of prior data. However, much of the grants data had to be manually uploaded.
And so that, so was everything already in Workday by the time it was launched? From MOHS?
I would have to, I would have to look.
And because I'm interested to see if the interplay with Workday had an impact on the timing as well?
And if I could clarify, so there are many pieces of information in Workday because it is one system of record. And so you have the grant agreement and award, but you also have the supplier account. And I, I know, although I can't speak to specific, we would call them suppliers, but in, in this case, for example, DaySpring or Community Housing, that some had difficulty setting up their accounts or accessing their accounts or learning, their staff learning how to access their accounts. That was in particular to the suppliers that MOHS contracts with. That was many of our suppliers. But I would note that that would also be a part of the successful payment process.
Right, just to make sure that they, they're getting, they're putting in the right information in order to get the, the payment. So it sounds like there was, that transition to Workday was part of, part of the issue, but also just the providers understanding what some of those new requirements were going to be as well. And I get that, you know, the department and pretty much, a lot of the agencies have had a lot of turnover. But this is just extremely important that we get, that we deal with this. We also had, and this doesn't, this, we also had this issue in my district, which I'm hoping to investigate further once the Consumer Protection Bill gets passed. But we did have a nonprofit that was defrauding some renters and landlords and claiming that they were getting money from MOHS and taking people's rent and then not paying the provider, the landlord. So the Consumer Protection Bill will help us with that, but it's very unfortunate that- but it's very unfortunate that, you know, something like that would happen. And hopefully, we can figure out a way to avoid that kind of thing in terms of not just hearing complaints from residents, but, you know, having some sort of investigative compliance type of deal and even educating landlords as well. Because, and you did respond immediately when I asked if that particular organization was part of your clients, and you said no. So we were able to uncover what was happening, so I appreciate that. Just understand that this issue of making sure that there are timely payments is critical and needs to be resolved. And it's not new, as we've seen. And so making sure that this gets done in a very timely manner is going to be extremely important moving forward and putting in the various processes so that things, you know, can't get messed up in the future will be extremely important as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're going to go to Chair McCray. Chair McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. President, is someone from the city administrator's office here?
Is anyone here from the CAO's office? No.
Okay. Thank you. Nina, I guess this is, this may be for you to answer. First, I do believe that someone from the city administrator's office should be here for this hearing. So I just want to note that during the presentation, the director did speak about the agency, she spoke about a lot of challenges. But she also spoke about how the agency is not hearing back from HUD in a timely manner, which can create gaps in paying providers. What I want to know is, and we heard a lot about support. What is the administration doing to mitigate these issues as far as bridging the communication gaps with our federal partners? How are they working with our federal elected officials to make sure that if our agency, specifically in this case, MOHS, is having a problem as soon as it's identified? What is the administration doing to help that agency?
Thank you, Chairwoman McCray. So concerning this issue, we do have a meeting scheduled with our federal delegation for this Thursday. As far as the timeliness of that moving, meeting and moving forward, we do plan to have more timely conversations with our federal delegation and keep them up to speed on any engagement that we have, especially with federal agencies and any issues that the city is having. So I don't know if that completely answers your question, but we hear your request.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to say it doesn't answer my question. Because I want to know if, if this has been going on, why are we just having a meeting on September the 12th to say, hey, we need some help?
So I can bring back additional information to the committee or to the council as a whole. But I do want to say that when we initially sent communication to HUD, we did follow up a couple of separate times to try and engage and resolve the situation before getting to this point. So we did have a couple of touchpoints of engagement. And I don't know if Director Augustine wanted to expand upon any additional conversations that the city administrator's office may have had concerning those engagements.
The only thing I would say is that from our department, we, we still meet with HUD, our CPD rep, in terms of engagement. Ahead of that, you know, I share whatever information I have with the mayor's office, but, you know, more than happy to participate in more conversations regarding HUD and these fundings as well, the funding as well.
Thank you. This is a follow-up. Can you, and this will be my committee request. Could you furnish us with the touchpoints, the times that you guys, the administration has reached out specifically regarding this agency to federal agencies, to federal elected officials? If there have been meetings as well?
Yes, and I do just want to underscore that immediately upon receiving a notification from MOHS, the city administrator and the administration did reach out to HUD and then stood up some monthly grant coordination meetings to discuss any federal and state grants that we are recipients of and to ensure that that process is streamlined and improved. And then we're working on longer range reforms on how we leverage the Grants Management Office and improve grants management as a whole. But as far as furnishing specific touchpoints and communications, we will provide that.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we're going to go to Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to all the folks who are here today, both the public and from agencies. And I will say that I think for myself, for several colleagues, for I'm sure the president's office, I think we end up being in a position of triaging a lot of this. And I know that my staff, Councilwoman Ramos's staff, I'm sure the president's staff, all of us are sort of doing case management in a way that isn't great because we're going to do it regardless because that's our job. But there's a level of expertise that your agency has that my staff and others don't in terms of the finite granular details of what's going on. And so it, it's frustrating on our end. And again, I think just the, there needs to be stronger communication between your staff and ours and the landlords and the public. It just feels like a real communication breakdown. I wanted to get into specifically around some of the providers, knowing that, you know, Ayers clearly has had huge challenges, but also want to talk about Dayspring. I recently saw an email from a former Dayspring employee that alleges a severe shortage of case managers and housing staff due largely to mistreatment by senior staff at Dayspring. Tenants and landlords have both noted separately to us just a lack of case management for particularly around addiction, mental health. And that is a real problem. We know that we have opioid crisis in our city. We know that we have a mental health crisis in our country. And so hearing that, I'm wondering how we, as the administration, are holding our service providers accountable to deliver the services that we are paying them to deliver? Because again, I'm hearing from both the tenant side and the sort of advocate side and the landlord's side that services are not being rendered.
Sharon, I would say, you know, you bring up a couple of points that I want to talk to. One, and this was very clear in our strategic investment plan, first, the lack of funding support for support services. And that's a, that's an issue, I would say, citywide. But the second part is with the funding that we do have, you know, being able, and that's the role that not only MOHS has, but also the continuum of care as they decide who they're going to fund with continuum of care funding because that does come from the COC. We are looking, not looking, we are actually doing improvements to our monitoring tool, not only to ensure compliance, but to ensure that that performance is there and to address kind of those issues that I would say our old monitoring tool lacked. And so we are making those improvements and working with the COC. I know the continuum of care is also taking a critical look at the providers that are supported through COC funds. And we'll be looking at these challenges in terms of the issues that you're seeing that unfortunately are confronted with you, by you because there are challenges with some of our providers. We want to make sure that we help the providers. We're providing technical assistance and supporting them to better serve our, our clients. But at the end of the day, if that improvement doesn't happen, that's going to impact them because we have, you know, only a certain amount of funding. We want to make sure that we're providing, that we're funding the best of the best of our community. And that's why there is a competitive bid every year for that. We will address the issues that, and you've brought issues, multiple council people have brought issues to us about our certain providers that, one, we want to make sure that we're helping the clients first and foremost. But, two, are working to address these challenges about certain providers that we're working, where we are meeting with and providing technical assistance to and to work with them to figure out the solution to the situation. But again, if it doesn't improve, the result could be, you know, that it would take a different direction within the program competition.
So, and I appreciate that, but I guess, I mean, we're talking about substantial lack of delivery of services. My colleague used the word fraud. These issues have been pretty well documented in the media and publicly and to us. So again, I appreciate that in future competition, they might not receive as much funding. But I guess like, are there specific clawback provisions? Can we get some of our funds back? Is there, you know, are we in some cases working with either the inspector general or the attorney gen, I mean, you know, we are talking about a very vulnerable population of people that need these services, that have not been delivered these services by multiple of our providers. And so absolutely appreciate that this would harm their competitiveness in the continuum of care process for next time around. But in the immediate, what are we doing to hold these folks accountable for not delivering the services that we're paying them to deliver?
So I think, you know, like, one, there is accountability, but two, there are people behind what, any decision that we make on this. And, and the prime example for this is Ayers. I'll be honest, when we had to address Ayers, I had started in June. The issue came to me in August. And it's a huge issue. Like, my fear was that we had, we were going to have 450 households out on the street because of the issue that frankly should have been identified way before I came onboard because it was a historical issue. And they had contracts not only with Baltimore City, Baltimore County, like other counties, and even HUD directly. And we took time, we took the time to really investigate and, and to put the accountabilities there, which ended up terminating their contracts. MOHS was not the only one. HUD was not, HUD also terminated their contracts and then a number of different agencies. But the people were still there that we had to figure out how to help. And so while it's easy to say, well, if you're not spending your money and you're not doing it well, like, just terminate the contract. But where does that leave the people? And at this point, that is why we have to work closely with our continuum of care. That's why we have to work with our providers and, and help them to correct some of the issues that are negatively impacting our providers. And, and I would like to say this is a new phenomenon, but unfortunately, it's not. And it's not, it's not just specific to Baltimore because I've seen it in every community. And that's why, you know, the competition's there because like I said, you want to fund the best of the best. You know, we will be there providing technical assistance. We ourselves are getting whatever help we need either through HUD TA or other consultants to ensure what we do as an agency, we continue to do it better and strive for better and better support our providers. But then, you know, the other question, and I don't think this is just for MOHS because this is something I've observed since I've been in Baltimore, is the struggle of our nonprofits. And, you know, a lot of them are really living check to check or, you know, trying to figure out how to make ends meet. And they're struggling as well. And, you know, at this point, we're going to try and support them. To end all the contracts that we have problems on, that we have problems with would lead chaos on our hands. And so we're trying to, one, set up, you know, an understanding of our, that's why we're doing our SOPs and understanding of what those systems are, creating those efficiencies, working with our staff to understand that. But at the end of the day, as we make these improvements, if a provider can't live up to that, ultimately, they're going to get their, their funding. They might not have the funding. And, you know, I would hate, I don't want it to always end in a termination of a contract. But we can't do that unless we know we're also providing the support that we can to those providers.
No, I appreciate that. And I understand and appreciate your point about the real people and potentially losing any kind of services. But it just does not feel like we are funding the best of the best or that services are being delivered effectively based on what the city's allocating. My second question, so again, understand the delays with BOE approval and appreciate your office's work to address the issues. However, what I would note, just reading an email, is that one of the Dayspring contracts was approved by the BOE on July 12, but rent payments for March, August 2023 were not received by landlords until August 29. September rent, which was due at the end of August, has still not been provided to one of the landlords who has contacted my office. How do we account for those delays specifically?
So I know at Dayspring, we pay, so they're current. And so, let me make sure. Dayspring's current, correct? Well, Dayspring, we know is at least current up until, they're current through August. And so they should be able to pay that landlord. So I'm not sure why that particular landlord was not paid.
Okay. Again, I think it just speaks to a need, if, if this is now on Dayspring, to hold Dayspring accountable to get that payment out so that this, the landlord can get paid so that the tenant cannot face eviction. To your point, there are real people at the end of the pipeline here. And it is incumbent on us to make sure that timelines are being delivered and that folks are getting the supports that they need. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Just to add one more thing, like, in terms of Dayspring and the evictions that did come to our attention, our staff was there every step of the way and sure, trying to prevent those evictions from happening. And so we were on top of Dayspring in terms of the billings and getting the, getting what we needed for that. But we had to intervene, which, you know, our hope is our providers are able to handle that and will continue to work and provide the technical assistance for that. But we did intervene to assist in that situation.
Again, thank you, Director and Mr. President. It has not felt like we're fully on top of it with Dayspring. But again, appreciate, appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Conway. We're going to go to Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President, Director. I hear, I hear the concerns. As a former liaison to the CLC, I know this has been a recurring issue since I was a liaison nearly seven years ago. So my question is first, and this is going back to your systems, how many people had access to the HUD portal in your office?
Had access to?
The HUD portal for reimbursement?
To ELOCs?
Yes.
So currently, there are two individuals. It's me and our fiscal administrator. We've put in applications for our new, newest accountant and actually a couple of accountants, they've been rejected for some reason or another. So it is a challenge to get ELOCs access.
So back to the question because the answer, the question was, during this incident, who had access to ELOCs? How many people had access to the ELOCs portal?
So the situation started around May of 2022 in terms of ELOCs access. At the time, we had, I believe, two accountants and one, the fiscal administrator at the time had approved, was the approving coordinator. At one point, the two of them lost access to it because they violated a HUD rule that they lost their access to it. And so the deputy director at the time gained access to the ELOC system. However, he was the one actually approving the billings that would go through the ELOC system. And then when the fiscal administrator took a position at another department within the city, it came to my attention that there needed to be another approving coordinator for that. And so I was advised to put my application in for ELOCs. I believe I did that. I got access. It took quite some months, and I don't have the timeline, but I can get the timeline for you. but I can get the timeline for you in terms of when I finally got approving coordinator. And then shortly after that, our fiscal administrator. But we were without access, I would say, for at least a quarter.
If I'm tracing this back, and correct me if I'm wrong, so you had three persons who were, had access, two where access was removed. Were there any disciplinary action for them violating the HUD rule that caused them to be removed?
So at this point, there weren't, but both of them had left the organization as well.
And when they left the organization, there was only one person left which, who had access?
And that's when the deputy director gained access as well to also support in the ELOCs access.
So at one time, there was only one person who had access, and then two persons had access, then one left. And then, there was completely no access for the agency somehow. When did, when, so can you provide me a, and I think the council should get this timeline, of each employee's access to ELOCs up until the point of where we went dark for three months? And then, based off of what you just said, I want to know how much was approved on a time in which we had full staffing to no staffing? So we understand how much money would actually was not reimbursed. And then for finance, my follow-up with you is a meeting with grants to understand the SOPs that they're going to help with technical assistance for MOHS in terms of the processing of the grants and also whether or not, and this is for the mayor's office as well, we should hire someone with the expertise for solely monitoring just this grant? Because spending $80,000 potentially to have someone fully being the checker of all of the financing for that agency would be more, would be more financially prudent than just having, no one having access or someone not having that oversight from a grants management perspective? Because I understand from my experience at the CLC that you do need to understand the thousands of pages of HUD rules to understand and process those payments. So I think that we should have in-house technical assistance for training for every staff person as well. And I would like to, as a committee request, have access and understand what the technical system looks like for HUD to us, because I recognize that when there is a violation, HUD does do a corrective action plan with the agency on fixing it. So I would like to see that plan as well.
Thank you. So for the record, if you could provide the committee, I guess, ELOCs authorization, accessibility, that timeline that Councilman Torrance ran us down and all associated information related to it. Was that, is that the?
Yeah, so who had ELOCs, ELOCs access? How much did they actually approve for reimbursement? So that we understand when one person, yep, the entire activity of the actual reimbursement process? And then access or provided a copy of the corrective action plan that we had to submit to HUD? And then, a suggestion to finance in the mayor's office about looking at hiring a full-time technical assistance person for the agency as well, for that training? Because if they're having turnover, there should be someone who is an expert still remaining in the agency.
So Director, you, you have that?
Yes.
And then, last and certainly not least, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I appreciate you saying not least. I, I have a couple of very quick questions. I want to, first, just for my own edification, I had a constituent that I came to the office with that was going through exactly this issue, and we had a lot of trouble trying to figure out what was going on. I'm curious, when do we know that this issue was tied to our processing administratively for this grant? At what, at what point did we know that?
So, you know, when it comes, and I believe, if I'm remembering, it's a landlord that had, they were wondering where their payment was. In terms of the contract delays, we've known it's historical, so it happens annually. I don't remember what agency it was, but it was one of those agencies that have an earlier start date. We, recognizing that HUD doesn't issue their grant agreements till later, the city jumps in to do the contracting, and we tried to do it as early as possible to, you know, shorten the amount of time there was in terms of a contract. But this is a concern for our projects that start as early as February 1st. So, the minute we got the letter of funding award from HUD, which was dated March 28th, we started the contracting process. It did take time to, you know, get those approved to buy BOE because they technically didn't get approved till July 12th. But we've been working with the Department of Finance to figure out, are there other ways we can streamline this process so that it doesn't impact our providers and we can contract much faster? But this has been a historical issue that even predated me, that you heard from some of the testimony that have been happening for decades, and we're looking for permanent resolution so that, you know, we got a lot to deal with, that this should, you know, this should be a resolution that we come up with permanently.
I think one of the, and part of the reason why I asked that question is I think one of the biggest troubles that we've had, and I've seen testimony from folks that are here, also in questions from my colleagues, has been around communication and being transparent about where we are and what we expect by way of reimbursement to our providers and then therefore them to landlords. Whatever we can do to improve that communication, I think goes a long way, and just letting folks know what to expect. If, you know, at this point, you know, one of the women here explained that they expect payment around quarterly. I mean, but letting people know that in advance goes a long way in helping them plan out financially what to expect. And I think for, for residents, making sure that they don't get evicted, that we can give some information on the front end goes a long way. I think also for, for my office and my colleague, Councilman Cohen also alluded to this, just, you know, we only know so much. And so, with our ability to relay that information to our constituents and landlords and otherwise, we're limited. We only know what you're able to share with us, but I think we missed a lot of opportunities for communication here that would have made, hopefully, this process a little bit smoother, although we have major issues to address. The other question that I have is regarding the issues around the $10 million grant. We, we talked about a number of issues. We talked about turnover. We talked about access to the ELOC system. We talked about issues with tech. I'm, I'm curious if we've done a complete assessment about what went wrong there? For us to not notice that we hadn't been reimbursed for over a year is especially problematic for me. And I, have we, one, identified all the things that led us to get a year down the line and not identified that this was an issue? And then, have we begun to rectify those issues?
Sure, and so, you know, and with CLC funds, like I said, it's an annual thing. There is going to be a certain amount of money unspent, which as a, I would say, as an agency and as a COC, we always want to make improvements, given that there are people experiencing homelessness, so we want to spend every single dime that we have. And so, we will continue to work with the COC, be there as partners, work with system improvements. So, because the money's there to serve people, we have to make the improvements to our systems to make that happen. You know, the other side of this is also making sure that administratively, and like I said, we've been working internally with our staff. Our chief of staff, his focus is really to get, to make those improvements in terms of our billing and reimbursement. We didn't have standard operating procedures, but we, we asked HUD to provide HUD TA to help us do that with us, which we've been actively working with to get those done and to make sure that that's implemented. And we'll continue to work with our providers to also make improvements on that side. And so, those are things we're doing right now. The staffing challenges are still a reality, but we are hopeful that in the account supervisor and the accountants that we've recently interviewed, that we have a few that will be hired on very soon to help us with that gap we have in our staffing. And then, when they immediately get onboarded, it's filling out that ELOCs form and making sure that they go through that process to get, so that we do have, you know, backup and not just one or two people that have the access and we're not without access again. All of this is getting written down. I think, you know, that's part of the challenges, is making sure that not only do we have standard operating procedure, but we can point to a manual and that we have it. And I think that has been, you know, some of the challenges in terms of transition is, you know, trying to figure out, okay, what are the processes that we currently have? And when they're not written down, that's very difficult, especially for new people, you know, coming into the agency. And as Director, you know, I came to Baltimore for this, and when they're not written down, it's like, what are the step-by-steps? And I'm a very process-oriented person. And so, we've made sure that we asked for help from HUD on this, but, and to get that TA, but also to start writing these SOPs, writing this all down so that we can follow it.
Yeah, I, I'm glad to hear that we're pulling together the SOPs. I think, you know, with a lot of the problems that we need to resolve, you know, they are processes that need to be shored up and followed regularly. I also just want to make sure that we clearly understand what resources we need bare minimum to make sure that this doesn't happen again, what processes need to be solidified to make sure that this doesn't happen again, what systems broke and where they broke, to understand what we need to make sure happens so this doesn't happen again. This is frankly embarrassing, and I, I see this in your face. This is not easy to sit through these questions. But I think it's really, really important that we learn from this and make sure that it doesn't happen again. Last question I have is regarding, it's my understanding we had to return some money in 2023. Can you tell me a little bit about how much that was and what, why we had to return it?
So, this was in relation to, and I, and I'll get you more specifics, and I'm trying to recall it off the top of my head. I believe it was about $100,000. It was as it relates to a monitoring that HUD did for us and the lack of supporting documentation for some expenditures that we asked HUD for reimbursement on. I think part of this is, one, trying to nail down that supporting documentation was difficult. I know we went through a transition between the old system and Workday at that time. But we, you know, we had turnover also in staff to try and identify that and couldn't produce a supporting documentation of that. And so, we had to return those funds back to HUD. But my hope is, as we create these system improvements, we, you know, we're working with Department of Finance, and while Workday has had its challenges, I do understand the benefit of having the technology and to have everything centralized, because I think it's important for us in how we do our business, and we'll continue to work to make the necessary improvements there.
I think this is another opportunity for us to learn from this instance. If, if you could furnish to the committee the, the amount that we had to return and the reasons why we had to return that amount or amounts that led up to the culmination of whatever it was, that'd be really helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to go back around. So Chairman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nina, can we have a copy of the letter that the mayor sent to Secretary Fudge?
Yes, I'll send that right now.
Thank you very much. I, I will do my best to read, because I'm reading from screenshots, because that was never sent to the, to the council, but bear with me for one second here. In that letter, the, the mayor says, this is dated June 27th, 2023. Recently, I was made aware of MOHS did not complete drawdowns, dot, dot, dot. To that end, I have tasked my chief administrative officer with developing and implementing a corrective action plan for MOHS. Two, streamlining the city's federal grants management process to include monthly grant oversight and compliance meetings facilitated by the CAO and the city's chief financial officer. I assume that to be the director of finance. And three, submission of a monthly status of grant funds report for my review. These reforms will take place within the next 30 days. Do we have a written corrective action plan?
So I, I created a corrective action plan that we did submit to HUD. And so, you know, I can speak to my part of this. I don't know where.
I, I just don't mean to interrupt. We have a corrective action plan? Can some, can someone send that to the city council right now? That would have certainly been helpful to have. A number two, streamlining the city's federal grants management process to include monthly grant oversight and compliance meetings facilitated by the CAO and the CFO. Have those meetings occurred and on what dates?
The first one is scheduled, I believe it's either next week or the week after, to take place.
The first one? And this, and just as a reminder, this letter from the mayor to the secretary of HUD is dated June 27th, and it says that that meeting will occur within 30 days, but?
I, I know that the, the CAO and the, the finance director have been working on this topic on a, on a reoccurring basis. And so, the, that broader group is being convened, like I said, in the, in the coming weeks. But there has been action that the two of them have been taking in, in planning for that work group in the time since that letter was sent out.
And Councilman, I will work to pull together the dates that the CFO and the city administrator have convened. They were setting up processes and a plan to move forward with all agencies, including contracting with an external entity to help develop formalized SOPs for grant, grants management.
Thank you. So, item one is the letter. Item two is the corrective action plan that the director referenced. Item three is a list of dates that the CAO and the director of finance have met. The third item in the mayor's letter is submission of a monthly status of grant funds report for my review. I'm assuming there's at least one, if not two, months of those reports?
The, that too is something that the, the CFO and the finance director have been working directly with the grants management office on. I know that they have, just from my interaction in, in other meetings, I know that they are, are working on that report and that they've been working to produce it. The, the finance director could provide a more specific answer.
Thank you. So the, the director, the, one of those reports has not yet been completed, correct?
I, I don't know that for certain. I know that they have been working to configure that report in, in Workday and that they had provided to the CAO different versions of the report where she was providing feedback to indicate, you know, that the, that it was, that the correct data was being reflected there. And I know that that back and forth has been happening, you know, in, in the weeks since the letter has, has gone out. Again, the, my director can provide a more specific answer of, of the status of the finalization of that report.
Thank you. So item one was the letter from the mayor to HUD, to HUD secretary. Item two was the corrective action plan that the director referenced, which was submitted to HUD. And when was that submitted to HUD, Director?
July 5th.
July 5th, thank you. Item three is a list of dates that the CAO and the CFO have, or, the CAO and the finance director have met to discuss this matter. Item four, we just discussed. You mentioned that there are two individuals within MOHS who have access to ELOCs. Do we know how many additional individuals have applied for access to ELOCs?
We've had two additional people apply for ELOCs access. One's pending, one was returned back with needed corrections to it.
And how many people are in the fiscal unit within MOHS?
Six.
So this letter from the mayor says, as part of onboarding new staff, So this letter from the mayor says, as part of onboarding new staff, all new fiscal staff will apply for ELOCs access? Has that occurred?
Yes.
So all six staff either have.
All new staff. So all the new staff, so we have one new hired staff. We had two temp staff to start Monday, so they will go through that process as well. And then any new staff that come onboard, once we select them, will have, will get ELOCs access.
Okay. MOHS will work with the Department of Finance to develop a process to reconcile and monitor ELOCs draws to ensure that this situation does not occur again. Do we have a written process?
We're working with Department of Finance on that reconciliation process.
What's the expected timeframe for completion of that process?
I'm, uh, I don't know. In terms of a, like, I would like it as soon as possible, but I know that we're partnering with DOF on that.
MOHS is developing a timeframe to demonstrate ELOCs draws between May 12 of 23 and June 15 of 23 in the amount of $7,943,107. What is the status of developing that timeline?
I vote, so, can you reread that?
Sure. MOHS is developing a timeline to demonstrate ELOCs draws between May 12 of 23 and June 15 of 23 in the amount of $7,943,107. So it says MOHS is developing a timeline. What is the status of that timeline?
So in terms of, so we make draws weekly now because we're required by HUD to make at least quarterly draws, but because we want to make sure that we make the draws, our fiscal administrator has been making weekly draws to ELOCs, just so that we stay on top of the draws itself. In terms of a timeline for that, I believe we completed the draws for those time periods, but I will double check and make sure we provide you with the update on that.
Thanks, if you could provide that in writing. How many COC sub recipients do we have?
We have about 40, I believe.
Forty. This letter says, MOHS has reviewed all current COC projects. Program compliance staff will begin to meet with sub recipients after July 1 of 2023, who are not on track to spend their total allocation to create a spend down plan. Ongoing, MOHS will monitor spend down monthly and will require sub recipients who fail to turn billings in by their contractual deadline, their spending falls behind, or they are overspending and will run out of funds to meet and supply MOHS with plan. What number of, of those 40 fall into that category? And of that number of the 40 that fall in that category, how many of those has MOHS met with since July 1 of 23?
I will have to get back with my staff in terms of an update in terms of that particular, but we have been meeting and addressing issues with COC providers in terms of their billings and spend downs, but, and program compliance has been actively meeting with them, but I need, I will need to get the actual numbers to you.
Thank you. This also goes on to say, MOHS leadership will meet weekly with internal program compliance and fiscal staff to work on past due annual performance reports or APRs. MOHS will communicate with the field office to request the necessary extensions and to provide the necessary justifications and information for the final APR submission. Is MOHS meeting internally weekly on this?
Yes, we are meeting weekly on that. We have a plan to get all APRs up to date by the end of this month. We have been in communication with our HUD CPD rep. There's actually a meeting today to, with our program compliance supervisor to go over the next steps with that.
And finally, necessary reporting calendars and standard operating procedures are being implemented to ensure all reports match accounting records and will be completed by, by July 15 of 23. Has that been completed?
We have completed some of it after we had our provider meeting regarding our SOPs. We're making some revisions and we'll have that completed October 15.
So we'll have that completed three months after, right, July, August, September, October?
It's, it's finalizing the document and making sure that, you know, portions of that document are rolled out and monitored.
I, I appreciate that context. I, that's helpful to understand why it will be three months after the date that the mayor committed.
But we've been, we've been actively working on it and making sure that, one, all the parties understand their role and responsibility with it and that it's correctly documented in the, in the SOP manual.
Thank you. Nina, have we received a response from HUD to the, this letter?
To date, I am not aware of any response we've received from HUD.
Can you get confirmation of that by the end of the day, whether or not we've received a response? And if we have received a response, can the council be provided that response?
Absolutely. I know the city administrator has not received a response, so I don't believe that we have, but I will provide that confirmation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna ask the question that I know the entire council has, and Nina, I know you're not in a position to answer it, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. You know, for the mayor to reach out to the secretary of HUD, for this issue that has historically haunted the city of Baltimore, I can remember being a council member and us being forced to give back a significant amount of money. I think Madam Vice President brought it up before because some of these accounting issues or lack thereof grant management issues. And for the mayor, again, to write a letter to the secretary of HUD, the concern the council has is we go through a long, arduous budget process where we ask you, the administration to come out, present their budget. And this is something that should be raised at that time. It doesn't take a legislative oversight hearing, it doesn't take folks coming, taking off work, being down here, sitting through hours, to know that this is a critical issue, not just to the administration, not just to the council, but to the city as a whole. And we find ourselves in the position constantly of needing to have these hearings to really get down to rudimentary information about really important things that operate our city, particularly as it relates to our residents. So, so the question that I have that you can't answer is, you know, why wasn't this brought up during the budget? That's an easy stopgap. Obviously, the council is the council president. This is something that we would want to be roped in and informed of as soon as possible, but at a minimum, for the administration to come before us, do the budget process and not provide any of this information to understand and know that this was a problem that was looming out there is very, very troubling and concerning and consistent with other issues that the council has had with the administration and communication in the past. So I think it's important to just bring that up, continue to send that up. But the council is quite frankly frustrated of waiting on news headlines or waiting for constituents to tell us information and issues that the administration should be providing full transparency to us far in advance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do just want to flag that the date of the letter was after budget hearings had concluded this year, so we weren't aware of the need to engage with HUD at that time. But I receive your comments well, that engagement on issues like these is very important.
No, that's fair. I, I guess the sentiment of my question was, the motivation to write the secretary of HUD clearly didn't start on the day that the letter was submitted. However, this council has been working with the administration, particularly through the budget process, where many of these concerns were noted. I think the director did a pretty good job of running through a timeline, so, again, for the mayor of the city of Baltimore to write to the secretary of HUD for something like this in the council, find out about this in this open forum is concerning. And if you could just pass that up the line, we would like to figure out a way where there could be better coordination in the future.
Absolutely.
With that, I think there's an additional question from Chairman Conway. You have questions still?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to break quickly, just note a couple of things from the particular instance with the constituent I've been working with on this issue. Happy to see that finally payments are coming through for rent. I think she is up to date on rent, but her BG&E payments are not. And so that's, that's a problem I think we still need to resolve and I wonder if that's an issue that we're seeing in other instances as well. I think it'd be helpful to know what the balance is across, and I think, Mr. President, I think you did ask for that, what the balance is across all rent and I would say also BG&E accounts for, for the folks we're serving. And then one of the other issues, I think someone else brought up, was caseworkers and inspections. One of the big issues that the constituent and I've been working with has been having is, she's been working with DaySpring. DaySpring has not been able to send anybody out as a caseworker or to do inspections. She's noted that she's got rats and she's got children. And we just want to make sure that we're providing that quality of care with the folks that we're working with to make sure that, you know, they're not in, in really, really poor situations. So if, if you can make sure to follow up with me on both those issues as soon as possible, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, are you able to supply for us any of the other recent HUD monitoring reports? And I would guess the last two years and the list of corrective actions that you've taken based on those reports? That would be great, just because given that we've found out a lot today, which is why we have these hearings, getting those reports will help us to be a little bit more proactive, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just did want to touch back on evictions because my concern is that, there was a statement by your staff that no evictions have taken place, but what I've, we've also heard is that there are landlords that have obtained additional warrants of restitution for future evictions. So in cases where there are warrants with foreclosures of the right of redemption, so tenants can't stay the eviction at this point, what is MOHS's plan to prevent the eviction from occurring? And will you commit right now? Because I know, like personally, I have several of these that my office is dealing with, I assume my colleagues do as well, that you will work with those tenants following this hearing to prevent those evictions from taking place?
So whenever we're aware of an eviction, we have intervened and work, we've communicated mostly through our provider, but we have worked with tenants and landlords directly. And so I know with the issues that you've presented to our office, that we do have staff members that work through this with particular providers. We work, you know, closely with them to understand the situation and why the eviction is happening. I think in terms of, you know, looking into the future, because this is a, a pretty significant issue that's happening within the continuum of care and looking at the information that we're requesting and, you know, being notified of eviction is something that we're looking to change also in terms of the monthly activity report we receive because it is such a, it's an issue that we see that is significant and unfortunately increasing in terms of the number of grievances that are, are presented to us.
Appreciate that, but it didn't quite answer my question, so let me be a little more specific. So five tenants have come to my attention, two that are under DaySpring, three CHA, who are in need of relocation by the end of the month because either their buildings have been sold or have notices of nonrenewal due to repeated failures to reimburse rent payments. So will MOHS commit to relocate those five families? And for any additional tenants that are out there that, again, are facing eviction within a determined amount of time, will you commit to working with those tenants as well as the landlords and the providers to rectify it? Because I think this is both sort of like a long-term crisis that we're addressing, but also there are some really immediate, like right now, literally in speaking to a woman in the hallway kind of issues going on. And so I, I just want to make sure that we're rectifying those issues in real time and that your staff is able to address, even the folks that are here today, to make sure that they're made whole.
Yeah, I guess to be more direct, we will help with those five individuals that you've made aware because the individuals that are, are brought to our office, we do intervene, working with the provider, with the landlord and with the tenant if necessary. If relocation is the next step for them, we will assist with that. But, you know, we've intervened and will continue to assist with those individuals.
I would sincerely appreciate that and I will be in touch with all five of those and so we'll look forward to the immediate follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, and thank you, Director Agostino.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cohen. Councilwoman Torrance?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one follow-up. I think that, in the same vein as my colleagues' questions, I think for the persons with credit were negatively impacted by this, how are we planning to support them in terms of final, finding housing later and paying for it? Because that means that a security deposit and all things are gonna be far more higher than they originally were. And then the other piece is, are we working with the court system to have those judgments removed as that will primarily be following those families? I just want to make sure that while the harm was caused, what are we doing to prevent collateral damage from our own harm that we caused on that family because they're still vulnerable? So I just want to make sure that, that is a committee request, that we have a plan in place to make them whole beyond just the fact of having housing, but how do we solve their credit issues? And how do we make sure that this does not stay with them for the rest of their, their life?
Yeah. I think those are the same concerns that we have, not only as a department, as a COC, especially we know how hard it is to get a new unit when you do have an eviction on your record. So we'll continue to work with our continuum of care to look at ways to address this and to address some of the longer-term issues that you speak of.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? At this time, we're gonna turn it back over to folks who've been hanging out with us. I have five on the sheet and then we're gonna go to online. First up is Heather Burlett. Is Heather, are you here? Public testimony, you have two minutes. Please state your name, organization you're coming from and then the clock will start.
I'm sorry, I've heard two minutes and state my name and then what?
I'm sorry about that. You state your name, organization, and then you have two minutes to proceed.
Okay. So my name is Heather Burlett and I'm a private property owner. I have two tenants that are in my property for many years now through the organization of Community Housing Associates. As already testified, there have been attempts to communicate back to me when I make contact, but never anything that amounts to significant payments at this time. Six months in arrears is over $12,000. A small property owner cannot pay bills, pay these property taxes, the fines that we get for any traffic in and out of the city. It's just untenable that we're going through this and yet maintaining our compassion for the individuals that we house. One of my tenants is particularly delicate. I can tell that she's on medication, although due to HIPAA, I don't know the exact details, but I used to work at Shepherd Pratt Hospital, so I'm aware. And she deserves all the care that we can give her. So I choose, she's in a two-apartment house, I've chosen very carefully to have tenants that will help her feel safe. Her daughter is active in her care and appreciates my interventions, but. Her daughter is active in her care and appreciates my interventions, but we can't keep doing this without money, $12,000 in arrears. My heart's always been in the city. My participation in my community has been extreme with Vice President of the Community Association many years ago. And I would just like to say that this is an erosion of confidence in the city. It's just a major erosion. The organization called House of Ruth let me down desperately, lost a lot of money there, had a real problematic tenant. Now this, I mean, a person wants to sell their properties and let them get built, you know, boarded up. We also have had an insult from the Community Housing Associates, and that is that Nico Saunders, the man in charge there, told me, "I don't pay late fees." Like, isn't this a business arrangement? Under what auspices can this gentleman tell me that in spite of our agreement and contract, he doesn't pay late fees? So if I ever get my money, I hope that you will also ensure that our late fees should be honored. We treat our tenants respectfully and honor our agreements. I think that was quite an insult to me. So thank you for this. There's also a little testimony from a friend who came and had to leave. Her name is Timu Davenport, and I have a note for Mr. Torrance, I believe, from her. So I'll give that to you, a little bit of testimony. Thank you, and speedy recovery would be appreciated.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Tim Peterfeld. I'm losing the name, Tim Peterfeld. Tim's gone. Next up, Sean Jones.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sean Jones, Baltimore City, in 21223. I have been an advocate for the homeless for quite a while in the city of Baltimore, as well as the state of Maryland and the federal government. I just wanted to say that our director has been doing a great job, generally speaking. I don't know what's been going on at our MOHS lately, but it just seems like it's a nightmare lately. And I know we have, you've been changing positions and roles and bringing this new gentleman, I don't know your name, I'm sorry, sir, to the table. But the bottom line is, I'm very concerned, extremely concerned. I don't sleep at night sometimes because I get calls 24/7. People knock on my door 24/7 because I'm well-known in the area for what I do. Sometimes people come for help because they can't get through the help line. Sometimes they take showers, baths, eat, whatever. I don't mind helping people because that's what God, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, asks us to do. But why are we losing money? Why are we dropping the ball? Why are we having situations where, for instance, it's my understanding that someone forgot to sign a document for a contract for the housing inspectors recently? It goes on and on and on. So I'm not going to ramble on about things that we've already talked about, but I'm extremely concerned. I don't sleep at night, literally. I don't sleep at day. And we're going into winter emergency shelter timeframe, and every single year around this time, we lose soldiers out in the field, so to speak, that are part of our community. We lose them because they get kicked out of the hospital ER room. And even though Johns Hopkins and other players said that we're not supposed to kick them out, we're going to make sure we send them to somewhere they can sleep and eat and be safe, they die on a park bench or the sidewalk. They freeze. People get kicked out of jail, so to speak, and they're not supposed to be sending them out for, without a plan in place, but they don't have a plan. They're exiting them out into homelessness. So it's not necessarily MOHS's fault that these things are happening, but what happens is when you pass them on from point A to point B, and now you're responsible for them, somewhere along the lines, the ball's being dropped. So I'm willing to do whatever I need to do personally as a citizen, as a human, but there's only so much I can do. And I just hope that we can figure out together, through the council's help, through the governor's help, through whomever, to save this sinking ship because Baltimore's going through a lot of struggles. I'm not from here originally, from another planet called Cleveland, Ohio, but Cleveland, Ohio went through this stuff 30 years ago. So I've seen all the things that you all are going through a long time ago. There has to be a way we can become Charm City again. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Tama Davenport, or Tamu Davenport?
I will allow you to read that.
Yes, ma'am. And then last and certainly not least, Mr. James Peters.
So my name is Heather Burlett, and I'm reading from Tamu Davenport. She wrote, "Councilman Torrance, I live in your district, 2458 Woodbrook Avenue. I'm neither a tenant nor landlord. I am a homeowner. Right now, on my block, there is a homeless encampment, Lenins of the Week building. This issue impacts all areas of the city. Currently, my property taxes are increasing while my property values are decreasing. This is simply a matter of transparency and accountability. I pay both my bills and my taxes to a city that provides lousy services. Obviously, if not addressed, this issue will increase the fast decline and destruction of the city. Tamu Davenport." Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Peters?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I work primarily with community housing, that's why I'm here. It's my situation. They are behind six months for five properties totaling $41,100. Community housing and I have been working together since 2014, so it's not a new relationship. There has been historical issues with payments annually forever since I've been dealing with them, and historically, it's been a one- to two-month delay in getting the rents. Last year, it went to three months. This year, it went to six months. My communication with them has been great. My contacts there have been fine, and they have continuously told me that their issue is dealing directly with MOHS. I don't have, that's hearsay. I bought a, unrelated to the five properties, I purchased a property from another landlord, have an MOHS tenant in place, already paying rent, already set up back in the spring around May. I contacted MOHS to set it up, new landlord purchase. It's been four months of rent that's owed, 41 emails to MOHS, 31 emails to Workday, and I'm still not 100% sure. The last time I heard, MOHS had said, you know, "Look in the mail by September 11th," which was yesterday. I haven't seen it. MOHS, from one of the emails back in June, had said to me, they gave me a number to Workday to set up for the portal, and he said, "I also found out that emailing is the best way to contact landlord Workday Portal, and you have to continue to send an email until someone responds." So that's the precedent that he sets there. With Workday Portal, in August 29th, after many attempts, like I said, we've got 30-some, 31 with them, a person responded kindly and said, "I looked into your account, but there's no POs listed, and I am unable to tell you who your account representative is, unfortunately. In Workday, I can just see your payment details are set up to be made by check, and there's some other details in there." But again, no answer, no way, no help, nothing to direct me in a way to go. So I just wanted to testify today to let you know, some of these issues, yeah, it might be an organization, it might be a nonprofit, but a lot of this is lying directly with MOHS and some of your systems that you're dealing in-house or with your Workday Portal. I didn't do a loan for one of my properties that had a tenant from community housing, and the bank would not do the refinance for it. I had to go to another bank because community housing was on the lease. I never was able to find out why, but that's what I was faced with. The website portal for Workday, I forgot what my username was, and throughout this process, and there's no way to say, "Hey, I forgot my username." It took two or three or four emails and weeks for them to finally tell me that, "Hey, you can use your email as your username." The W9 form I filled out for them was incorrect, but I fill out W9 forms for everybody, and they told me it was incorrect. I looked it up on YouTube from the IRS page or whatever, how to fill it out, and they were asking me to fill it out incorrectly. So there's definitely some issues in-house there, and it's like a hot potato getting passed around, it seems like. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have the $41,000? Do you have something that we could hold on to? Give it to Mr. Green.
There's two pages there. One is a check register so that you can see the dates that I received the payments, and the other one's just like a spreadsheet, you can see the missing rents that I have unpaid.
And Mr. Peters, if you could write your name and email address and phone number on that, greatly appreciate it.
I'm Tim Porterfield. I had signed up earlier. I had to step away for a moment.
Okay, no problem.
Do you mind?
Yes, sir. Your turn.
I'll try and keep my comments fairly brief and pointed.
I have a rent roll here.
One second. When you speak, please speak into the mic, and then we'll come get the information.
Okay, let's try that again. Much better. I'm Tim Porterfield. I'm a landlord here in the city. I'm a small landlord, tiny by most people's estimation. Despite that, I would say 20% of our tenants are extra-challenged. By that, I mean, one is a handicapped tenant through a handicap program, the other is a homeless vet through Project Place, which has been the worst example of getting paid. The rent roll in front of you is three years' worth of rent roll. During that time, I've been paid on time exactly one time. And you can see the exact dates on the spreadsheet there. You know, I don't want to throw a tenant out or just replace him however I need to do it. It's not his fault. And I think one of my points here is, you know, landlords get a bad rap a lot of times, and some of them deserve it, I'll admit, but there are a lot of landlords that really are trying to do our best and actually trying to help people by providing housing. And several of those landlords are here in the room. I know them, and that's the way I learned. And we have done everything we possibly could to keep this homeless vet in our place. Right now, we're behind $3,245. Mind you, all the late fees, which we can't collect, would amount to almost $1,400. We're doing our best. So I think the other thing I have to say here is, we need your help desperately. We need these processes streamlined, the communications improved. I know there are a lot of new people in the process, but we had a Zoom call with Project Place and with their landlords and with MOHS, and the director at the time wasn't yourself, to your earlier points. But it became quite clear that nobody really understood what the flow of this process was. And obviously, to me, I don't want to tell you how to do your business, but I'd be wanting a flowchart that says everything that happens in the process and who has to do it. That way, when it breaks down, now we know. And if it doesn't work, we can look at it and say, "Oh, my gosh, that doesn't make any sense." I mean, in one example, it appeared at the time that process was being handed from Project Place to MOHS, excuse me, back to Project Place, and then back to MOHS for the same thing. Help. Most importantly, we need solutions, and we're dependent on you all. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you. There's some feedback. Did you guys hear that? I don't know what's coming from. It's like some feedback or something. I mean, in the back room. What is it? Oh, it's coming from the office. Before we recess, oh, it's his phone. Yeah. It's all good. Before we recess, is there anybody else who would like to give public testimony who has not had an opportunity?
Yes.
Yes, sir. You can come up. Please state your name if you're from an organization, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mark, Councilman Lee, organizing housing for our neighbors. I just got one question, several statements. One, I would like to know about the $75 million that was promised. Two, I would like to know what happened to the hotels that was promised to us. Three, it's a lot of accountability that's been misplaced by far as the money concern. We have heard about that. And all I keep hearing from this organization here is the fact that this money is gone. It's pointing fingers at WHO dis, that and everything else. But right now, we can fix it. If y'all remember my friend Anthony Williams, he would sit there and say something like accountability, you know, things like that should not happen. I cannot accept this money being gone because of the simple fact that when y'all drop that ball, we die. That can't happen like that. We demand that the fact that when Joe Biden signed money into our, the Opera Funds or whatever, we expect for this money to be used for this reason. We need this money. We need to save lives, and this is how this money can be done. It can't be misplaced. It can't be dropped like this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone on the line? We're going to go first. Carissa Maturn, would you like to speak? We're going to unmute you. Next up, Ms. Caroline Johnson, would you like to speak? Next up, Randy Willison. Next, Stephen Klein. And that concludes everyone. At this time, we're going to put this legislative oversight hearing in recess. So again, at this time, we're going to put LO 23-0042, the operations of the mayor's office of homeless services, in recess. I'd like to thank everyone from the mayor's office and the administration, as well as general public, advocates, landlords and tenants for coming out and participating in today's discussion. Please be on the lookout for the next scheduled meeting of this body to take this issue up. Obviously, the purpose of the next meeting is for the council to ascertain the information that has been asked by the administration today to ensure that we're all on the same page and we're moving in the right direction so this reoccurring issue does not become a consistent issue in the future. With that, thank you so much. We love you, Baltimore.